You ready?
Council President Conahan?
Here.
Councilman Carn?
Here.
Councilman DeSena?
The President.
Councilman DeSeno?
Here.
Councilman Doty?
Here.
Councilman Grizz?
Here.
Administrator Dula Place?
Here.
And Attorney Christina?
Here.
Okay, thanks, Kelsey. So for everyone that doesn't know or know, the mayor is not here. He was in a car accident today. He's okay, right, Michael? He's okay? And it was a tractor trailer. Could have been a lot worse, so he is okay. So unfortunately, he's not here tonight. So I'm filling in. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers. I'm going to start things with our presentation tonight from Dawn, our tax assessor. So Dawn, if you want to get up, I guess, if you want to either that lecture or...
Are we...
There's a mic, there's no mic, yeah.
No mic? I mean, can you hear me? Yeah.
Dawn's going to run through a presentation on the current tax assessment. I'm going to open it up to questions for Dawn, and we'll take care of all that in the front end of the meeting.
It's not really a presentation, but I'm going to go over just some frequently asked questions, and then maybe your questions will be answered, and then we'll do your actual questions. So a lot of the questions start from the beginning. So a couple of years ago, the town did a townwide revaluation where the town was reassessed after about 30-plus years of not having a rebau, and the values changed dramatically because after 30 years, the values were set in 1986. So as you may have known, your values were the same as 1986. But for all those years, your taxes probably didn't stay at 1986 taxes. They probably went up probably every year from 1986 till now. So the assessment doesn't raise taxes per se. It's whether the budget goes up or the budget goes down. The assessment is how the pie, which the budget is pie, how it's cut up. And so my job is to try to determine the value of your house. Because you're supposed to pay taxes on the value of your home to cut up how the pie gets cut up, and the pie is the budget. So how I try to determine what the value of your home is is by using comparable properties. And a comparable property means that if you live a Cape Cod, I try to look for Cape Cod. I try to look for the same square footage as your house, or at least a very close range. I try to look at how many bathrooms, how many bedrooms, do you have a basement? Where are you located? And those are the things that I look for in a similar property. Also, I'm looking in a very small, well, a one-year timeframe. I'm looking for last year, from October 1 of 2023 to October of 2024. That's the sale I'm looking at to determine this year's value. So that's where I'm getting comparable sales from. Yes, right now, we are in a very big upswing in the market, so values are rising. They have been going up at least 10% a year since COVID started. They're not tailing off yet. I expect that they will, but I don't know. For right now, I'm looking in the window of the October 23 to October 24. I'm looking at the same window for everybody, and yes, the sales are up. So the way the program works is I value everybody based on that timeframe, try to find similar comps, try to do everyone the same. If the market goes down, like right now, the market goes down because these are the sales I'm going to be looking at for next year, your values would go down. Just like the market goes down, your value goes down. We're trying to keep everybody's value as close to 100% as possible. The law says you're supposed to pay taxes on the value of your home. I'm trying to determine the value of your home. Am I perfect? No. Do I get everything right every single time? Probably not. There's a process that you can do. You can write to me first. We'll talk about your assessment. I'll show you the comps that I'm using. If you're unhappy, there's an appeal process. I will give you all the information. I'll help you through it. You will have to provide comps of your own that are different from mine to show that your value isn't the value. So that would be what we go through the process, and that's how it works. I don't know, did I hit all the big highlights? Is there other... Oh. If your assessment went up, which it probably did because the market has been going up since two years ago when we did the full rebau, whatever percentage it went up does not mean an equal percentage in tax dollars going up. The reason for that is a whole entire town's value as a whole went up about 12%. The residential properties went up more than 12% because not all property appreciates the same rate. The residential market is appreciating a lot more than the commercial market. Office buildings, industrial buildings, retail, everything went up at a different rate. So this year, the residential market exceeded the rate of the commercial market. So when I say the average was 12%, it's an average. Some things went up more than 12%, some things did not go up to close to 12%. So it doesn't equate to an effect rate change. The rate should be going down with a 12% increase, but that depends on the budget. The budgets aren't done yet. It's not just the municipal budget, it's the school budget, the county budget, the state budget, the state aid to the school. All these budgets have to be in before they know how it's actually going to affect your tax dollars. That's why the bills don't come out until July, because that's when the rates are gone.
Dawn, do you want to bring up anything? I just asked you before, 15, 20 minutes ago, about if we were to stop this next year or this year? And then what was your response?
If we stop now, we will be set at these assessments. So everybody will stop at the same time, but in my opinion, it's not a good idea because we're still at the height of the market. We're looking probably at a little bit of a downturn. So we'll be stuck in the high assessment. It's bad, not so much that you'll have to pay more, that's not the problem. Everyone will be set at an artificial high rate. But what the problem is, is if you stop and say we want to do three years down the road or five years down the road, you have to do a whole entire townwide rebau again like we did two years ago, which was a lot more costly than having the 20% inspections every year that we're doing now. If we stop now and the market dropped off tomorrow, I would not be allowed to change the values next year. So everybody would be set high, and that would actually open up the town to a little bit of a liability because everyone would appeal, and then you'd probably all win, and then the town would have to give back money, which is not good. So if we lower the assessments when the assessment's lower, everybody is paying the amount that's really high.
Thanks, Dawn. Anybody else up here have any questions before I open it up? Joe?
And I thought it was one myself.
How does it affect our county rate? By our balloon being bigger, do we pay more for the county?
Well, the county equalizes the assessment based on our ratio. So if our ratio is 100, then our assessment stays what it is. If another town's assessment is lower, if they have an 80%, then whatever their town aggregate is, and if it's worth, if the aggregate's $10,000, you would divide the 80%, so it would actually be 120 would be their number. So the county equalizes the aggregate value, so that it doesn't hurt you as far as those rates.
Okay, if the town appreciated 12%, what was the commercial?
The commercial appreciated about 6%. Right, but the commercial properties are a lot... I actually don't know off the top of my head the total value of the commercial, but some of the commercial properties obviously are millions of dollars, where the houses are 500,000 is a house. Some of the properties are 25 million, 30 million are the commercial properties. So no, they did not go up 12%. The other thing, another frequently asked question is, my house wasn't in the inspection this year. So how does that work? So how that works is 20% of the houses get inspected. When it gets inspected, they're looking, the inspectors are not appraisers. They're not doing the values. They are checking the data. They are updating the record for the data. They are coming in, it takes about 10 minutes. They're saying, you got three bedrooms, you have two bathrooms, you have finished basement. Do you have an attic? Is it finished? Do you have a garage? Do you have this? Do you have that? They already have the record of what the house is, and they are verifying and updating the data. They are inspectors. They are not... I'm not saying that they also may be appraisers or assessors somewhere, but in the role here, they are inspecting and doing data. I am the one who's compiling the data and creating the assessment. They are assessments, they're not appraisal. I don't take each and every person's house one by one and do an appraisal like the mortgage would do. I'm doing what's called mass appraisal. I do have a program that I put in the parameters that I want, and I try to make it very close to what your house is. It tells me the sales that are very close to your house based on the parameters that I pick. And that's how the value gets derived by when I'm trying to pick very close parameters to your house. That's how I do it. I don't do like a mortgage appraisal that's going to go in and fine-tune every single thing. Mine is more of finding the houses, and the more the data is correct, the better result I get. So the houses, 20% get inspected, 100% get evaluated and reevaluated every year. The values change for everyone. You can't just change some people and not other people. That would be unfair, and it would be uneven, and it wouldn't be... It would be inequitable for all the people involved, for the town people.
Anything else for Dawn?
I've heard comments, and I've gotten questions from residents all about it. The taxes will never go down. This number will never go down.
They might not, but that's not up to me. That's not up to your assessment. It's up to the... You guys want to carry on the bus a little bit? It's up to the budgets of the town. If the town budgets don't, if they don't spend less, the taxes don't go down. It doesn't matter what I assess you. The taxes as a whole, if the schools spend less money and then cut their budget, the taxes would go down. If the town spent less money and the county spent less money and the state gave more state aid, well, state aid comes from us in our pocket somewhere else. But if you get... The only way the taxes will ever truly go down is if you spend less money, just like in your own household budget every year.
Thanks, Bobby. Okay, Dawn, I'm going to open it up for questions. You want to stay there? You want to sit here?
I can sit here if I want. As long as everyone's here.
One of the things, sorry. One of the other things I've heard, and I've also noticed, is like, I'll use my neighbor as my example.
Help him for a friend?
Yes. He did not let the inspector in because he was concerned or whatever.
Okay.
And so even though my, well, we have the same zip locks, our land value's the same on it. My house is like more, but his taxes are still more than mine.
Okay.
So what would he do in that type of scenario?
He could file an appeal, and I could do an inspection. If you file an appeal and you haven't been inspected, you're going to have to come and do an inspection just to verify the data. And then we make sure the data is correct, and then we, you know, run the comp to see, you know, why it came, the two houses came up differently.
Would he be entitled, if he did, would he be entitled to a correction and then a reimbursement if the taxes showed up, say, one is appealed? These are the ones that you said.
If it showed that there was a reason that the value was wrong based on the comps of the new data, then he would, yes, he would. But it might be that there's something there that I didn't know about and it wouldn't raise it.
So like letting the inspectors into your home is beneficial?
I think it's beneficial because then we get the facts right on your home. And if I'm comparing your house to somebody who has the facts wrong, you know, something could be wrong there. But it can only do, you know, based on the best data we can get. The best data is actually seeing the data.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
What was the percentage last time people that came in the house to show everybody?
Inspections, how many?
How many people? What was it about?
I think this year, we got about, out of the 20% that we were doing, I think we got in about 65%.
So it's up from...
From the, yeah, from two years ago when we did the...
What was it, two years ago?
I think it was closer to just 50, which we would like to be higher, but I think some people were still, there's a couple things. People were still worried about COVID situation. People are very, still worried about people coming into their homes. The people that we had inspecting, the town knows about them. They have IDs. They can show you an ID that they work for the town. And we know who they are, and you can always, you know, call or whatever, or schedule, or have them come back, or have them show you their ID. They have little fake IDs.
You have fake IDs? You don't know who you're letting in your house unless the town turns down the door, just letting you know.
We sent out letters ahead of time saying they would be in the area, in the areas that they were. If you didn't get a letter, they weren't in your area.
Thank you, Dawn. All right, so I'm going to open it up to questions. Everybody that comes up, you just have to say your name and address.
Hi, I'm Brienne Repomis Draster. I live at 232 Green Avenue. My question is about the house there, because it applies across the board. I know I emailed you about this. There's houses, a lot of houses on my street are very tiny colonials, which is my size of the block. And then there's a lot of brick Cape Cod. A few of the houses, like my neighbor, has a renovation Cape Cod that is a whole-blown colonial home, vaulted ceilings, and they're upstairs, the whole thing. There are veterans who are in each other's home all the time. The houses would sell for pretty much the exact same price as they went on the market, yet their house went up 3% in value and mine increased 38% in value. So their house went up not even 10 grand, and mine went up $155,000. I just don't see where that's fair and applied equally. Also, at the front up above my block, where there's no flooding issue, I live in the spot that gets hammered with floods and hurricanes. Up at the top of the street, the largest house on the street, which is our house, is a three-bed, two-bath home. This house at the top of the block is a four-bed, two-bath home. They get house on the block clearly, and she's also a friend of mine, and hers went up $100,000 at a $504,000 value. My small house is valued at 609 right now. We're a young family. My mind is blown over this, and I don't see how that's properly or evenly applied. If the whole town went up 10 to 14%, why didn't my girlfriend see a 3% rate increase? And mine went up 40%?
And I did write back some to you, and you wrote back a lot to me, and I need to investigate more.
This isn't really like a problem.
Right, no, and I am going to investigate more. And, but I don't compare the assessments to assessments. I'm not comparing your house to other people's assessments. I'm comparing your house to houses that have sold that are similar to yours. So it could be that the one across the street, I don't have good data on, and that one didn't get compared to those, you know, it's maybe not the same type of town, it might not be compared. I'm not saying it's 100% all the time. There's a range, you know? Maybe your house should be more of the lower of the range of what I sent you, or maybe you need to look through and find different comps. I did send you some stuff, and I know that you sent me back that I still have not investigated yet.
Yeah, so that's my big concern. If the whole town went up 10 to 14%, shouldn't that have been more equally applied across the board?
Not necessarily. Certain houses, certain types of houses appreciate more than other houses. Some houses went up even more because they were completely got renovated, and it's like a new house.
That was with my house, got completely got renovated. It was just a very tiny addition back in 2021. My house already went up 26%, $2,000 a year, as my taxes in 2022. So now it's looking at where taxes doubling.
But 2022 was a reset for everyone. The ratio at that point was only a 24% ratio, which meant the values that were on the house were only, it should have been four times that. Okay, because it was 20, that value was a ratio of 24%. But those values from two years ago were set in 1986. So from 1986, they basically were not changed. They were only changed if you, you know, added a room, did a renovation, or whatever it was. At that time, when they did the rebau, because it was like, if your house's assessment was 100,000, that would mean that with a 24% ratio, your house was worth about 400,000. Okay, so it took a quarter. But what happened, when they did the rebau, the housing, the residential, went up 300%. So meaning that 100 went up to, say, 300. The commercial properties in town went up 500% at the time of the rebau. So at that time, the commercial properties actually took a lot more of the burden of the tax bill at the time. But when I say that was just an average, it doesn't mean that everybody that was 100 went to 300. Some people's houses were totally different from when it was 1986, and they went up more than the 300%. But you can't compare what happened two years ago. You can't compare what happened two years ago in the rebau because that was a reset from 1986.
Right, but what was, right, so that's, that I understand. So in the case of the neighbor's house that I'm talking about, Ed was in one of the brick Cape Cod's across the street. That's more, his house more or less stayed the same. The corner lot that I'm talking about, it doubles aside. It has vaulted ceilings upstairs. It became a whole-blown colonial. And that renovation was done maybe, I don't know, eight years before my house. And my house, a porch got enclosed on the front. It didn't blow out the whole building of the house. So this house is a whole-blown...
And for you and I, I have to pick through the data that you gave me and see which data is data that is incorrect on those houses, which data is maybe incorrect on your house, or not that even that your data is incorrect, but maybe the comparisons are...
It doesn't make sense to me that, I understand you're sending me parts of recent sales, but we need to go from here to where that woman is standing, to my neighbor's house across the street, and it's a three-bed, two-bath, nicely made home. Their house has a door kitchen, and our house does. That house is $200,000 less than mine, and I'm going to have taxes that are thousands of dollars more. That doesn't make any sense.
And again, I don't know when that house was inspected. I don't know what the data is on that house. And I don't, I don't know what I'm comparing that to without looking from this venue. And that's what, when I look at the stuff that you sent me and analyze it, that's what we'll discuss.
Okay. And so my other question is, when you talk about comps, you're talking about recent sales.
Yep.
Where I would want to see recent sales of literally our half of the block where we get hit with massive flooding, not any like...
Right, but if this didn't happen this year or last year, it's not going to be relevant because two years ago, the market was 20% lower, and three years ago, it was 30% lower. And four years ago, it was even less than that because until COVID, everything was kind of level until COVID happened, and then things went like this. And they're still going like this.
I just feel like it seems, I have a lot of friends, family, people I know that's done it up here my whole life. I feel like every person I talk to, it doesn't, my parents live on the Parker side. They went up 50. Okay, that seems pretty cool. My mom was like, I went up 50. I went up 165. She was, oh, okay, that's good then. I'm not saving anything with mine. It just all over the place. It doesn't make sense. A lot of the houses...
It is a little all over the place, and part of the reason is, is because inspections, the rate of inspection wasn't that great.
But the town doesn't swing that much from house to house. I feel like middlesex, it's not like we have multi-million dollar homes. We're not Westfield. We're not all over the place.
Right, but the new homes are selling for $750,000. And I'm not saying yours is a new home. Like, that's what they're selling for.
My 100 years, 100 years old.
I said the new, they are new. They're about, they're about 2,200 square feet, but they're new colonials, but they're selling for 750. But I'm not comparing an older home to these new houses, but I'm saying that's the market we're in right now. There was a sale for $1.5 million in a family home house. It is a recession, that's why I'm not using it as a comp for anybody's house. It is something that I'm not wanting.
Joe? Just wait, yep, yep, I raised my mic. I'm sorry. But go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, I don't feel like across the board, I think for a lot of people, it just would not equally apply. You know, mine was the one that they came into this year, but in 2022, they did come in. And at that time, all of the work that we did in the house was completed at that point. And so that should, my house has not changed from the point of the last inspection to this point.
But the market has changed through that.
But, okay, so my house, the same exact house, my neighbor's house hasn't changed. Mine moved up 38%, and theirs moved up 10%. That doesn't make sense. So there's, I know that there's, you know, nothing's perfect, but that's crazy to me, that. It's not the 10, some people are being told the town went up 10, some people are hearing 14. If that's the case, then why did everyone's house just go up that amount?
Because if everybody else went up, we wouldn't need to change the values.
But we just went through a reassessment in 2022, so we should all be at a freeze for, okay, now everybody's where they need to be. So then why isn't it like last year? We all went up 5%. So then this year...
Nobody, nobody went up last year.
Mine went up 5%.
No changes were made last year.
The assessment did not change for us.
That's what I'm saying, the assessment did not change. Last year? But why did it quickly, you just reassessed last year? Okay.
Joe, wait till she's done.
Okay, that was my big thing, is I just don't see how it was, how they came out with these numbers. And I get that, you know, I get that the market goes up. But if the market goes up that, doesn't everybody just go up together?
No.
That doesn't make sense for a house. Houses all within a, like a four-bedroom... Like, my cousin has a house on Harris Avenue, four bedrooms, three baths, double home, two living rooms, a 12,000-square-foot yard. Mine's a 4,600-square-foot yard. Her's had her evaluation 592, mine 609. That, I don't get that. I don't understand that.
And the things that you sent me, we can address.
And I would do it in person.
And I don't need to not do it, but it is relevant to, specific to your property. And I...
And I would come in and see Dawn Wednesday.
And I'm not done communicating with you. We're talking through...
Okay.
So Dawn is available by phone and email. Email's the quickest, and then she's also, she has office hours on Wednesdays. So you could schedule an appointment to sit with her to go over, you know, your specific property. She'll go over the comps. You can, she could print stuff off. It's always better in person, right down the hall. Okay, Joe.
Okay, good evening. Thanks, Doc, for coming out here and doing your...
Joe, name and address.
U.S.A. East Lurino, 117 Kirkville Avenue, District 2. As I said, we were just reassessing 2022. Got came into the house, didn't do nothing to the house. A lot of people, you know, 1,200-square-foot house, 1,400-square-foot house. What happened? You do your comparables, right? So you go from, like she said, $450,000 to $580,000 in two years. That's because the market is telling you, hey, you know, your house is on demand, right? Now, I don't know if you ever heard that thing about unconsolidated gains? Okay, so this is like that. If I sell my house for what you're saying my assessment is...
Right.
My problem with this whole thing is just, right? Why not tax me on the sale of my home? I mean, there was a time when I was a builder, you go buy a house. It was like, okay, the new owner's going to pay the increase in the taxes because it's going to be reassessed at the new rate. But now these houses keep getting reassessed while we're still living in them. And, you know, we can't go to, we can't go back to our bosses and say, hey, I need a 16% increase in my, you know, in my pay because, you know, I have to pay more money in property tax where I live. Now, my taxes, like a lot of people, tripled since I've been here.
How long have you been here?
50 years.
Okay. Triple over 50 years? I mean, what else has happened? Cars, you know, how much did they go up on?
That's fine.
I can't...
Slowly. You almost said that before, too, that our taxes are still going up, even though assessments never went up. Perhaps it's because of the expenditures of the town and the multiple you use on it. But that's my primary thing, like this whole idea of when you get the car and you see the car and it's $580,000, and you, you know, no one came up to me, definitely give you $580,000. You're telling me that's what it's worth to compare to a house that's sold somewhere else. house that sold somewhere up. But I, I don't, we have to come and talk to you, talk to you about where you got that stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the whole thing, I mean, what, what I don't like about it is the process. Having to pay upfront, a higher property tax on something that happens.
But it's, the property tax rate is not gonna be the same as it was this year.
So that comes down a little bit.
Correct.
Okay, so, it comes down a little bit, but then the value.
Like when we did the revow, the tax rate was 9.81, okay? You didn't pay, you're not paying taxes on 9.81 anymore, because now the value went up, there's a bigger bottom number to divide the budget by, so it went down to 2.3. And next year, and this year, it should go down, I don't, I can't say to what, because the budgets aren't in, I don't know.
This would be like a, a no interest, what you're saying.
I don't know if you're at, if you went up 12%, if you went up 12%.
So the multiple goes down, value goes up, we're back to where we are.
Correct.
Except we have this sticker shop that we get in the mail Saturday, that tells us our house is worth 140,000 more than it was two years ago.
Right, right.
But we're not worried about the taxes.
I, I'm not saying.
That's why a lot of us are here, because.
I understand, I'm not saying, don't worry, I mean, I live in a town that's been annual reassessed since 2002. In Somerset County, they started annual reassessment over 35 years ago. The last time you got the revow, in 1986, that's the year that Burton County started annual reassessment, and they've been doing it ever since.
The reassessment, the reassessment could have needed a high score.
I don't know. I was on a high score, but.
I was too.
One, one question, Donna, excuse me. What, what drives a reassessment?
Okay, yeah, so the, what, I'll tell you what drives a reassessment. The state looks at normally three markers, and then they order you to do a revow, which happened here, happened in Danellan, happened in Elizabeth, happened in a lot of other places. They look at the ratio that I spoke about before, Danellan's ratio was 24%. That means that the values that were on the books were only averagely, like, of average 24% of the actual value. So if it was 100,000 on the books, your house was worth about 100, is what they said, okay? But that's, doesn't, the ratio always doesn't equate exactly to every single house, because houses depreciate, depreciate at different times, not just houses, but the commercial properties and everything. So they look at the ratio, it's 24. The second thing they look at is how long since the last revow. Typically, if it's over 10 years, they get a little worried. It was like.
36, 36.
Then there's a third thing, that's a very, you know, kind of a technical thing, it's called the coefficient of deviation. What that means is, when a house sells, how far off is it from its assessment? And if the coefficient is bigger, it means that a lot of the houses are off that 24%. It means a lot of the houses aren't selling at that 24% ratio that is placed on the town. So when the coefficient gets over 15%, that's the third marker that they look at. For middlesex, time since last one was 36 years, ratio was 24, so the marker that they look at, once it gets under 85%, is when they start getting worried about the ratio. So the ratio's at 24, the standard is 85 or better, and then the coefficient, I actually don't remember exactly what the coefficient was, but it was over the 15%, which is the marker that they look at. That's what triggers an ass, a reassessment. The annual reassessment program, which we started this year, attempts to keep the ratio as close to 100% as possible every single year, so that you don't get into a situation when it's at 24, like the time of the revow, where commercial was actually 500% more than it was worth, which is, you know, awesome. That meant for like a lot of years, perhaps, they could have been carrying the burden more than the residents.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll have to get down and talk about this, right? But on state level, on county level, in my opinion, from addressing this thing generally, you know, you know, expenses are going up, because they're building a lot of condos, not enough single family homes, so the value of the homes are going up, and we talked about why that happened, but, you know, because the zoning ordinance allows things to be done when they shouldn't be done, and they are done, and they are done. And, so here we are, you know, we have single family homes, kids, guys, who has a colony, who has a what, and then everyone wants to buy it. Okay, but I, I go back to unrealized gains, you know?
I, yeah.
I really think that, you know, in this whole process of everyone trying to get the money they need to fill their budgets, you know, everyone at home has tightened up their own budget, because we only can make what we make. I think government itself needs to do a little, you know, help type it. Now, maybe we don't need to hire, you say we need to hire people, how about asking some people to stay a bit longer? So we're not putting more people on pensions, and having to hire new people to replace them? That's been going on now for, what, 30, 40 years? And that's, and this is where we are. It just keeps going, government just keeps on getting bigger and bigger, hiring people more and more, and it comes to a point where the private sector, like where we are, we don't need to care, don't worry about it. Trump will take care of it. But this, when this guy comes to that, we can't even account it, you know, it's important, it's about everything.
And this might be a great question for a budget, or a school budget, or some other budget.
Yeah, Joe, so remember, it's county, the, the school board goes into this, and the town, and there's, there's a library tax, so there's really four, unfortunately. Some towns are paid for, we have a pretty lean team here, Borough Hall has 10 people, we're all volunteers up here, there's no.
Volunteer fire department.
Volunteer fire department, yep.
General tenation, we do, you know.
Yep, CPW.
And all that stuff, it's just, it's a lot to come out of a small, two square mile town, and it starts to blow up, you know, then it just trides out.
I agree, I agree, Joe. Two years ago, I got, I got whacked online, you know, but.
I mean, the county and the.
It was 36 years, so I, you know.
I mean, teachers are, teach English, right? They go to school whenever there's, someone needs a tutor. So we're paying for more tutors at your school, so the school cost goes up, because we need to provide, you know, teachers, the, the, the.
I just wanna hit on one thing you said.
Yeah, Joe, unfortunately, the, the school, we got a lot of questions about the school here.
I know, I just wanna hit on one thing you said, Joe, is that you said, why don't we tax people at the sales price? So if someone bought their house in 20 years ago, and they're getting taxed at that price, and someone bought their house now, that's gonna be very unequal and very unfair.
When the market doubles out, it goes back down.
But if you only change it when someone sells, what if they never sell, and they lived here since the 20? You don't have to pay 10, pay taxes on a $10,000 house, they paid in, or 24,000 that they paid in 1970, which is what my parents paid in their house.
Well, the new buyer is gonna be paying that new rate.
But what if there's no new buyer?
Exactly, then there shouldn't be a new tax until I sell it.
Then you're not paying on the value of your home, you're paying on a value of 20 years ago.
Well, I mean, if the tax has still been going up at a certain percentage.
Yes, they, absolutely, that's why your assessment, you don't get more taxes by making the assessment higher.
Well, this just seems like a real, a real quick top.
That's not how the taxes get done.
It seems like a real quick top.
The, the town doesn't say, Dawn, we need more taxes, so raise everybody's tax rate, that's not how it works. The budget gets done, and it gets divided by the aggregate of the town. So, if the town went up 12%, the tax rate goes down, because the budget's getting divided now by a bigger number, which makes a smaller tax rate. That's what happens. They don't, they don't say, we need 5% more money, raise everybody 5%. That's not, it's not how it works. And not everybody gets, goes up 5% at the same time.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's not.
I don't wanna take much more.
Joe, you're good?
If you wanna talk.
You're good?
But we can talk.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
I know there's a lot of questions, but I have one more, last question. A lot of people ask me the question, and they say, I don't have any kids in the school, I never had any kids in the school, why do I have to pay the whole tax? Here's why, the gas station doesn't have any kids, they pay the full tax. The Amazon warehouse, they don't have any kids, they pay the full tax. Every property, any owner that owns a property pays all of the tax. The school, the county, the state, to everything. That's how it works, whether you have the kids in the system or not. Commercial properties, your ratables are never, ever gonna have any kids in the school. They are still paying the school portion of the taxes.
Yes.
And it helps everybody out. That's the system in New Jersey. If New Jersey wants to have a different system, great, but that's how the system works, that's why you pay the whole tax, because even the commercial property pays the full tax.
But you get to change the percent.
No, there's no percent change. They pay the same rate as everybody else.
Hold on, guys, hold on, hold on. Uh, I don't wanna, you got people waiting in line, yep.
I can't stand online.
Okay, so, right after the gentleman, yeah, right before Joe, yeah.
Thank you all for your service. We all live in the same community, this is our family, did you see here? We all have concerns. There's one, several issues that I have. One is that we divided the town into five zones, 20% each. I happen to be in that one zone, the first zone that's being reassessed right now.
Everyone's reassessed, you're inspected.
Okay, so, what happens to those people that are in zone five, because they're being, they're gonna be reassessed?
They get reassessed based on the data that was collected from the last time they were inspected.
Five years from now?
Well.
Four years from now?
Right, or maybe they got.
I'm being charged now, or you're being charged then.
Everyone's getting charged, if you wanna call it charged, everyone is getting reassessed based on the data that we have. If they didn't let someone in two years ago during the inspection, and their data's incorrect, we're, yes, we're, we're going with wrong data, that's why every, the cycle of 20% every year. Trust me, 20% every year to get new data is a lot better than waiting 35.
Now, I also understand that there's a thing that's called a property card, and I may be using the wrong term.
Yeah.
It's, the last time they looked at your house, it said you had a two bedroom house, one bathroom, with finished basement and attic.
Correct.
How do I obtain a copy of my property?
You ask me, I'll send you one. If you do email, you can email me, I'll do it within a day. If you don't do email, then give me a thing, and I'll send it on the mail to you.
Now, should we find any discrepancies? Or should we feel that our taxes are not fair? How do we go about correcting that?
There is an appeal process, and I, again, if you do email, I can email you the information. It comes from the Middlesex County Tax Board. That's who handles the appeals, and what you do in an appeal is you fill out a one-page form, but you do need to do a little homework, you need to have comparable sales, which is what I talked about, to show that your house is not like the comps that I give you, it's like some other comps that you, that you find. And I look at them, I look at your house, I look at them, and first, I look at them, and I say, hey, you have something here, I can settle with you, or I can say, I, I don't agree with you. Then you would go to the tax board, and you would tell your story to the commissioner, they'd look at your data, not, not, they're at the tax board, they look at your data, they look at your comps, they look at my comps, you tell about your house, you tell why you think I'm wrong, I say, here's why I think I'm not wrong, they make a decision. If you're still unhappy, you can go to tax board and do the whole thing again. If you have wrong data on your data card, on your property record card, I will fix your property record card. A lot of times, it might not necessarily change your assessment very much, because if it's, the square footage is the square footage of your house, you might have, you might have had a three bedroom house at one time, and you changed one of those bedrooms into this beautiful closet, big, beautiful closet, you know, it's still the same square footage, it's not for me to tell you what to put in your house, it might not change that much, you might call it only two bedrooms, but that house could potentially still be the three bedrooms, and it's still the same square footage.
Two, two years ago, they came through and they reassessed our house, I forget the name of the company.
Yeah, it was, um.
Something, doesn't matter, irrelevant, whatever. They produced a report that says Tim Stewart, who lives 245 Main Street, lives in this house, and it looks like this. Do you have that information?
From two years ago?
Yes.
No.
Because I called them and they too didn't have.
No, so one, the record.
I was expecting that you wouldn't have that, because they made the assessment of our house, but I would think that was probably some valuable information that you probably would use.
So what happens is, the record used to be on paper.
Okay.
Okay, it's now done in a computer program, which is all the data that I keep. Once I change the data in there, that becomes now your property record card. Whatever was in there two years ago, if I've changed it now, isn't gonna be there anymore, because it's one record, one card. In the olden days, when they kept it in paper, I went there, I might have it in your files in 1986, but that's not gonna be, you know, really relevant now. It might, it might be exactly the same house, but it's really not relevant now. Once the property record card gets changed, then that's the property record card.
You referenced a resource talking about houses being sold in our community. Is that Zillow? Is, I mean, what, what is that?
No, absolutely not. It's not a bad resource, but if you go on Zillow, they will probably.
I don't care about Zillow.
My source are the actual deeds that sell at the town, and you can, there is a place you can look up, on the Middlesex County Tax Board, you can look up all the information of houses that have sold, any house that was sold. My records are, come, the deeds come from the county, I put the deed into my record of what the house sold, and that's the record I use right now. And I'm using my, and I'm using my records.
What I would recommend is, again, sitting with Dawn, because she has it all on her mind. When they, no, 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 but I'm not trying to, but I, she's done this for other people, so she can actually pull that info up on Wednesdays for you.
Or I can pull it up any day, the way you can email me.
And if you email her, she could do it, that's why I'm trying to save you some trouble, she could do it and pull it up for you and provide it for you.
And, and.
So you don't have to go to county.
And then the records I'm using are the ones that I have in my property record card. Zillow, the reason, Zillow is good to get a general idea, they're okay, but you will notice that they will compare a condo to a single family house. They will do a one floor condo and compare it to a, you know, a new, they'll, they'll do a brand new colonial. Their algorithm is very generalized. I am, when I do it, I'm trying to pick out very specific attributes to the houses. Zillow and those things, they're doing more like, oh yeah, the house in Middlesex, it's the same, they're not all the same.
Yeah, but aren't you just looking at the sold price?
Only the sold prices, yes, but when Zillow, Zillow, absolutely, you can find, what Zillow's great for. Zillow is great for finding homes and looking at them, see what they sold for, and see what they look like compared to your house. That's what they're great for, but the Z estimate that they do is not exact. Right, but they put an estimate of what the value of your house is, they're telling you, they do put an estimate of your value of your house.
Two years ago, I did this with you, and you threw all my Zillows out, but I was using, you said Zillow's no good, and I worked for three days on Zillows.
Zillow is good for finding sales and looking at the house.
Sale, not the estimated sale price.
No, I, I understand.
So you're saying that Zillow posts erroneous sale prices?
Sometimes, yes, but that's, it's good for looking at houses that are, have sold in the area. Sometimes, I do throw out sales, if they're in a state sale. No, if it's an estate sale, it's a foreclosure, some sales, the 1.5 million I threw out, just because it's double any other sale all town.
Sir, sir, don't do respect, sir, there are people here that are.
I know, I know, I put a sort of second, but I cannot.
We understand you can't, you're a different person after this one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, officer, yeah, that's okay. Again, distinguished council members, and taxes center, Dawn, we thank you for your service here, and.
And you can write to me, and I'll write back with them, and probably the.
Understatement process, and we find, we find discrepancies, we come to you, and we talk about, if we have an agreement, if not, then we would have to go to, I guess, Brunswick, and then raise the concerns.
Yeah, set up a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday.
Again, I apologize.
It's okay. It's okay.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you for coming up. Let me go first.
Hi, ma'am.
Bernadette Mulnor, 311 Main Street.
Okay.
Okay. Um, first of, my first question is, if we waited thirty-six years, why did we wait for an all-time high to then choose that as the time to pick the value? Okay, so in two years ago, actually, it was more like, I think, four years ago, the, the, the state ordered this town to do a revow. It was, it takes about, from the time you're ordered to the time you can actually do the revow, usually takes about two years. Because before you can do a revow, you have to update all of your maps and get the map certified by the state of New Jersey. If you haven't done your maps in also thirty-five years, I don't know if they were, they weren't, I don't know the state of the map. But it takes a little bit of time to get your map certified, about eight months. If it's in good shape, it could take longer. Once your map is certified, then they allow you to go and put an RFP out to get a company to do the revow. So then you have to put the timeout, do all the quotes, interview the, the companies to get it. Then they start the revow. That would be in a good time. For Middlesex, that timing also lined up with COVID. It's not a really good time in nineteen, in 2020 to do a revow. So they asked for an extension, which they got. They asked for another extension in 21 because there was a resurgence of COVID and people still did not want to let people in their house. So then they pushed it again to 22, which is when they started the inspections and the numbers went on for 23. We have now started annual reassessment. And the reason the town decided to do that is because, one, not because other towns do it, but many, many towns at this time are doing it after they do conduct a revow. Because you don't need to certify your maps every year, they're already certified. You can adjust the values as it happens. Market goes up, great, value goes up, markets go down, values go down. Taxes are not done by the assessments. It's the budget. If the budget goes up, which it goes up every year, taxes go up. If taxes were cut, taxes would go down. So the reassessment allows us to inspect twenty percent of the houses every year on a rotating basis, which helps keep the record a lot cleaner than when you wait ten years, twenty years, thirty years. It, the records are much more up to date. As far as annual reassessment goes, like I said, Somerset County's been doing it for thirty years, almost every town. The towns that aren't doing, there's five, they're all doing revows for this year and the next few years. They were all gonna do annual reassessment after the revow. Dan Allen also got ordered. They were in the same exact position as you guys. Their tax rate at the time was ele, over eleven percent at the time of their revow. They also got ordered by the state. They did it, they're on annual reassessment, they just completed their fifth year. And the assessor over there too. Now, we're gonna start over in the first section and we're gonna do it again. Mom of county, all the annual reassessment, every town in Mom of County.
So Bernadette, yeah, the big question though was about, we got, I, I saw letters.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thirty-six years, we were mandated. We got, we got a one- or two-year reprieve because of COVID, but thirty-six years, none of us were here, right?
The revow, that was done two years ago, cost the town over $400,000. How much, by doing it, a fifth?
I, I found out, Joe, from the CFO, it's roughly thirty to thirty-five thousand a year.
So it's a big difference.
Yeah.
We save a lot of money by doing it in smaller batches.
Which is not, which is not a bad thing to have a revow. It's just the fact that we waited thirty-six years and we waited for an all-time high.
I agree, Bernadette, I agree.
You were mandated, you were mandated.
It was a crime what happened for thirty-six years.
Exactly. And then we were also told that grants and other state and county programs were gonna come in to offset this huge thirty-six-year, yes, not doing the homework, I guess, right? So they were gonna come in and they were going to help us with the assessment that we didn't go from a $50,000 house to a $500,000 house. Who could afford to stay here?
But, but the tax rate changed at that point.
When that, but they said that was all those two, right? So that we would now not feel this $50,000 to $500,000 difference. I work in the mortgage department. I work at mortgage business. So I agree, Zillow is not an accurate, it is a tool, it is not an accuracy program, okay? But we're also talking about, we're sending people into people's houses who are not appraisers. We're saying just counts.
Some of them are.
Okay.
And, and the ones that I hire are also, are assessors as well.
Right, so what I'm saying is, if you're gonna come into my house and you're gonna evaluate my house, I would prefer it.
They're not evaluating it.
But they're not, right?
Yeah.
So then what I do, because I don't go out to your house, I don't want to do your mortgage because I'm going, right? So what I do is I then put all your information into a, an AVM matrix and it comes out with a, a number. Now, that number is usually lower than Zillow.
Because of mortgage.
Right?
Yeah.
So now you're talking, if you're going to assess my house, I wanna know what the mortgage company is gonna give me, not what somebody might think it could possibly sell for.
Right.
So there's a big difference between what me as a mortgage person is gonna give you for your house versus the person who's gonna say, well, if I'm gonna come in and I wanna buy your house, I might buy it for $500,000. Or because of the fact that right now we're at an all-time high, houses are at a premium, I mean, people are bidding wars where they're like, it doesn't matter that your house is worth $500,000, I'm gonna give you right.
And to stop for a sec, from a mortgage view.
Right.
The house was sold in town for 1.5, okay? They probably could not get a mortgage, it's not gonna comp out.
Right.
So they're gonna get as much as they can get based on that comp.
Right.
And they're gonna have to pay the rest in cash.
Right.
And then when you do a bidding war and you're bidding a lot over the sales price, your house is probably also not gonna comp out. And that's why, when you say, oh, this is sold for this, I am using not just one sale, I'm using several, I try to get at least five, just like, um, like a, an appraiser would, to determine the value. Because one sale isn't gonna make the market.
But I'm saying not to use sales, I think that's what other people were saying.
Well, you're just determining the value of the market.
It's sold in AVM, it's an evaluating matrix.
Where do they get that from?
There is computers in there.
Where does that data come from that goes into?
Oh, I can find out for you.
It's from the assessor of the town.
Okay, so why, why are they selling for so much less? Okay, mortgage less, selling higher. If you're gonna value me, value me at my lower, don't value me at a higher.
I think, I think the mortgage, I think the appraisers, appraisal for the mortgages are coming in at least now. I worked as a mortgage.
I know, I'm not here to argue on this one.
I had my real, I had my real estate license when I was eighteen years old. I did it for ten years. I worked for a mortgage company for six years. I've done mortgages. I live with a mortgage person, does mortgages, talk about mortgage every day.
And where do you work now?
I work, I'm the Somerset County Deputy Tax Administrator. I worked there for thirteen years. I'm the person, if you live in Somerset County, you come to, to do an appeal. I, that's where my normal job, my full-time job for thirteen years. I've been the assessor in Dan Allen for about six years and here for, I guess, about three years. I understand that. And I, we, we actually don't, will not use a mortgage appraisal. I'll say bring your mortgage appraisal. But they're also using houses collateral and often are a lot stricter, let's say. But they use, but they are skilled at doing it from comps. And if you look at a real estate appraisal for a mortgage, you can see what kind of adjustments they're making. And if they are trying to get the price, they're like, oh, well, I'm gonna make the adjustment bigger. I try to not use very, I use very limited adjustments. Not to say that their adjustments aren't warranted. I try to find houses that are very strict in comparison. Very similar square feet, very similar amenities and like not big adjustments. And when comps come back with really big adjustments, that's, first of all, you're not even allowed to house a certain amount after a certain point.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're also making time, on real estate ones, they're making time adjustments, they're making all kinds of adjustments. And sometimes the adjustments are very big. And that's, I mean, and I'm not saying that a mortgage appraisal is wrong. It's not wrong. I'm not doing a mortgage appraisal on every single house.
And my last question, I mean, this is just my appearance, not only this question. Is the Amazon building, uh, Middlesex building, that?
Yeah, it's in Middlesex.
Okay.
So when, so when that property came, and that's a huge business, gigantic, and the amount of traffic that has now encroached on the town with all those trucks, how did that not all set up like immensely? Because we went from small business to town, right? We only had very, very small businesses in town, and that's a gigantic business. How could that not have paid?
It, it's a combination, Bernadette, it's a combination. One big thing that the mayor has talked about over the last couple of meetings, it comes up. So the Blue Acres, so I don't know if it goes back thirty years or thirty-five years, something like that. We've lost, we just hit our ninetieth home that we've lost. Uh, Raritan Avenue, the home on Raritan Avenue is now purchased by the state. So if you average ninety homes at $10,000 a year, that's $900,000 every year. Gone. So the Amazon almost kinda plugged a hole. And we had, we had one also on Mountain Avenue, the warehouse back where Appleswood was. Uh, much smaller in size, but that plugged the other hole. So now we're kinda getting back to where we were if we don't have any more homes. And I think we have one or two more on Second Street. So the Blue Acres, think about that, $900,000 a year, every year.
I just don't wanna see everybody leave the town. Yeah, I love the town, so that's all I'm saying. But I do love the town, I just think it's a shame, I think we're all gonna be taxed out of this.
Well, listen, we're, 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 we're doing our best. We, my question I heard before the meeting even started was, well, if we stop this, you know, and I was serious, or if we delay this, and her first thing was, well, if the market goes down in a year or two, what happens then? And then, and then everybody's, well, then everybody's screwed even worse because your assessment's locked in.
Which is right. And I can tell you what happened. Look at Mandel, okay? Mandel did a revow after many years of the height, well, in the height, I think it was around 2011. Then they had the flood. That flood is not all the town, but a lot of it. To, to the degree that one part of the town was now called a lost valley. They lost eighty homes to Blue Acres, which are not on the rolls anymore. That's eighty homes gone off the rolls. Everybody else in town is not paying the taxes. But in 2012, the values, in 2012, the values were still set at a high price and now they're flooded out. There's no more, there wasn't an annual reassessment there at the time. I can tell you because this is where I work and what I do. Four hundred people, which is about a fifth of the town, appealed and won because their assessments were here and their houses were now one of here. The money was $400,000 they had to pay back out of the municipal budget to the people. And when you pay back an appeal, it only comes out of the municipal portion of the budget. The school doesn't take any money out, pay back. The county doesn't take money and pay back. The library doesn't pay back, comes out of the municipal budget. So they had to get, it tacked onto their municipal budget. The next year came, they didn't do any annual reassessment, they didn't do anything. And another twenty percent of the town appealed because they're like, hey, those people were really successful and I'm still up here and now they're down here. And that's what happens if you, if you leave it at the, at the high level market.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Bernadette, thank you. Yes.
Hi, guys, my name is Tyler Payne. I'm at 409 Melrose Avenue. Um, mostly, uh, I wanna say, you know, like, my place went up in '22, '23, uh, 413%. My taxes, the actual money I paid to taxes, it went up four percent. Like, the, the value that you get on the card is not gonna affect the value of the taxes you're paying. Uh, what will affect it is when the teachers finally get their new contract. That's gonna hit us harder than this, most likely. Uh, my question is quick, guys, really more, um, than anyone around. Uh, I'll get email you, but come here. Uh, Subley, Clooney and Company LLC, are they collecting tax information on behalf of you?
I have no idea about them.
Perfect, a scam piece of mail, I can forget it.
You're welcome.
I just got a quick question, I'm a Philadelphia native. Um, I'm looking at, I'm gonna try to review. There's one condo, yeah, all of them are condos.
Okay.
Why do one go down in your tax and every other one went up?
What's the actual assumption?
Well, $266,500.
And, okay.
And the other ones, the other ones, well, what do you say? Because the ones that don't have a basement are less than the ones that have a basement.
Okay, that'll make sense.
She wouldn't let nobody in the house.
Okay.
So I don't know if she has a finished basement in her house. So let's just say she doesn't have one.
Okay.
Her assessment today is $266,500. Everybody else is $287,600. And they're all of them square foot.
But some bases, some of these ones have gone.
But those went up.
Okay.
So one of my points is, if she didn't even put, if she didn't have a basement.
Right.
Why you see less than the remaining?
I don't know, but we can find out if she has a basement and I can work into it.
You're definitely, definitely.
And we, we can look into it. And if something's wrong on her, on hers, next year, she'll go up more percentage than you.
Does she get away with it this year?
Maybe.
All right, I'll see you Wednesday.
Which Wednesday night, yeah.
What's that?
Well, I was gonna say Wednesday night. You know. Hey, Gene.
Hello, N and I from the [inaudible]. I have a couple of questions, but I wanna correct on something first.
Okay.
Houses on, on Raritan Avenue, my father built them in 1965.
Okay.
All right? He wanted to put apartments, put parking underneath. And the town wouldn't let him, okay? So you're not getting tax money from that land because you got it for.
We were.
I know, but I'm.
You gotta talk to your kid.
I just wanted, you know, for the record. Anyway, I have a couple of questions. So I think you answered, you answered one, but I didn't quite understand.
While I was talking, I only answered one question.
Well, I thought.
Okay, I'm just.
And I think I'm gonna probably, you're probably gonna wanna look, look into it. I'll probably have to come in and make a point and go over. But I do have, I have several duplexes in town.
Okay.
And, um.
They probably went up a lot, didn't they?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, but you know why?
I, it doesn't matter. I, I always ask the, ask the increase for the, uh.
Do you think that's a very hot, you know, do you think that's a very hot topic?
I, I know, I know. But my question is, I have two.
Okay, and they're different assessments?
What, the, uh, well, the assessment is different, yes. But the amount that I'm being billed for taxes is within a hundred dollars of the two.
Okay.
And one went up $35,000 more than the other.
Okay.
And I was just kinda curious on that.
Okay.
That's something you probably have to look, you know.
In your office?
One went up thirty-five thousand.
More, more than the other one.
Okay.
Yet I'm being taxed pretty much the same from last year's taxes.
You don't know what the taxes for this year, yeah?
Oh, no, it says right here.
No, but what you got billed last year.
For two thousand and twenty-four.
That's what you got billed last year.
Right. That's what I got billed last year. What I was billed last year.
Right.
Is within a hundred dollars.
They're almost the same.
Huh?
They're almost the same for last year.
They're almost the same.
They might almost be the same this year, but we don't know yet because the tax rate doesn't come out until July.
Yeah, but the, right, but the, but the tax, the assessment went up thirty-five thousand. I guess maybe.
I understand.
Okay. So.
And the taxes.
I think someone else would answer that question.
Right. And the taxes may still be very close to each other. Because.
Oh, so I have to wait till, uh.
If, if you're.
August.
If your duplexes are worth in the six hundred thousand, right?
Um, let's see here. Uh, well, now they are.
Right. Because that's what they call it.
Thirty-five. By the way, I would sell them to.
And I said divide.
And then you might collect the registration on yourself.
No. We, we don't. But the thirty-five thousand in assessment on a six hundred thousand dollar building isn't going to equate to a big, a really big difference in the taxes.
I, I kind of figured.
So they're still going to be roughly, yes, they went up a different amount. They're different locations, different ones. But they're probably roughly going to be around the same taxes again.
So you're saying.
As he talks.
To find out.
With the bills, yeah. We don't, well, we don't know what the rate is. Right. We don't know what the rate is until.
July.
Okay. All right. Then the other question I have is, um, so, um, I have one building that's assessed for, um, six, seven. All right. And I got a letter that somebody's willing to buy it for five sixteen. Okay? Now, I own a building in Barnegat.
Okay.
All right. And I know it's a different town. But, um, okay, the one that they, they offered me the three hundred, the five hundred sixteen thousand, I'm paying like thirteen thousand dollars for taxes a year.
Okay.
All right. The one in Barnegat, I got, I got an offer, I got an offer.
Means nothing.
For, for three thirty.
Means nothing to me. The tax dollars I don't control.
I understand.
Well, and it's a different town, different, whole different system, whole different government, and I don't control the taxes.
Well, then you may.
I don't control the taxes in this town or that.
Why, why don't we cut corners here? Why, why, why don't we look, why, why doesn't every department get a twenty percent cut so that people who are paying taxes get a little, a little break?
I'm sorry, is it too nice here? Huh? Is it too nice here already?
Is it too nice?
Yeah.
I don't know. Barnegat might not, listen, Barnegat might not have your garbage for free.
Yeah, Gene, it's apples and oranges.
They might not have as many kids in school. They might not have garbage for free. They might not have a school club. They might not have, I don't, a library. I don't know what Barnegat has and here has. So I don't know what they're paying.
I'm not paying four thousand for that.
Right. But they don't want a house that they offer me over three hundred thousand.
Yeah, but Gene, Gene, the schools and all that stuff, remember, look at your tax bill. You'll see it's, I, I think mine's fifty-eight or fifty-nine percent. Schools, another twenty-four for the county. And then I think we're another, we're twenty-two or twenty-four, somewhere in there. But, you know, you just gotta look at that, that breakdown. But again, Barnegat, what, Ocean County?
No schools.
Yeah, no schools. Ocean, yeah. But, but not the kids that we have here. I mean, it's just, yeah, it's apples and oranges. I, I know what you're saying. I do.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
So.
I'm good.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Oh, boy.
Hey, Paul Kevich, two forty, Hazelwood. Go on. Earlier, you said tax base within twenty twenty-five went up twelve percent. Collect them with the whole town?
Yeah.
Okay. So I was just wondering about that. Because there's a sheet out there, and the mayor said on his sheet that it went up fourteen percent. You're saying fourteen, one's twelve?
The residential home, on just the class two residential, it went up fourteen percent on average. So that might be where that's coming from. Yeah.
Would you mix in?
When you mix in everything, it was twelve overall.
Okay. And you were saying, I believe you said earlier.
Average.
Commercial went up six percent?
I think, I think so. Yeah.
Um, this twenty percent that were just inspected.
Yeah.
How many properties were in that twenty percent?
One thousand.
One thousand? How many did you gain in?
It was about.
Sixty-five percent.
Okay. So that's better than the fifty on the.
Yeah.
Well, is there anything being done about the thirty-five percent that didn't let the inspectors in? You talked about, you guys talked about it when you, you were here in September.
Okay. So this year, I would have liked to have longer inspection time, but because it was the first year and trying to get it all together, it happened in the late end of the year. I think we didn't start until mid-October. This year, we're gonna start a little earlier. Gives a lot more time, a lot more options for inspectors to get in. And I hope to get a better inspection rate.
Okay. Well, you just said you hope to get a better inspection rate, but if we don't, I mean.
I'm not, I, I can't go door to door and hold a gun to someone's head and say, let him in.
But a lot of other towns, people will not let them in. The assessors will say, okay, if your home is, if they think the home is at five hundred thousand, will say, we'll make it five twenty and give them an incentive to let the inspector in and give us an act of accounting.
There are, there are some towns where the inspectors will add things to the assessment if they don't get in. They typically will put a base, a finished basement and a bathroom in your house, whether you have a basement or not. That way, the assessment will be artificially high, which will cause you to do an appeal, which if you do an appeal, then you have to have an inspection, or you, you can't win without it. But that costs the town a lot more money to do that. I don't believe that that is a good way to get, get information. I don't think it's a good way for the town. It, it costs the town money to do that. Because if the appeal, if the house is artificially high, and you win an appeal, that's the money that we have to pay back. And like I said before, then it comes out of the municipal budget. Costs us money. It's not a good way to compel people.
Is it good to have thirty-five percent of the homes out there? You don't know what they have in the house.
I have what, whatever from before. And if their assessment, yes, maybe some people are getting away with something, okay? If their assessment seems high, they will appeal. If they think theirs is wrong, okay? If they sell the house, when you sell the house and the listing is on the MLS, I look at every single one of them. I look at the kitchens. I look at the bathrooms. I look at every, it's like an inspection for me. I look at every single house that sells, and there's been a lot of them the last few years. And I look at that data. And I look at it, and I compare it to my data, every single sale that happens. I try every day to quality control our records so they're as up to date as possible. Do people get away with finishing their basement or doing whatever? Yes, they do. And it's even harder now because you can gut a kitchen and put everything back in the same place, not a brand new kitchen legally without permits. It's really hard sometimes to get the data. But when they sell, I am, that's why I look at every single listing that happens. And I can only do the best with my data. And that's why if you do every year, there's a good chance they'll catch them the net eventually. If you, if you wait ten years or thirty years, you're definitely not really catching.
No, I don't, I don't.
I was trying to catch, I'm not trying to catch anybody. I'm just trying to keep the data fair.
Right. Well, if you're striving for fairness.
Yeah.
I see something unfair, about thirty-five percent of the people not letting inspectors in. And even if it's ten percent.
Maybe they're overstating.
You know, especially, you have so many people, if you're talking tonight about them being over-assessed, you have thirty-five percent of people who, and I'm, I'm sure it's not the whole thirty-five percent, because my piece of it is being under-assessed. So I just think some, my opinion, you know, you say there are other assessors in other towns that will say, okay, let's bump them up a little bit to give you the incentive to let us in so we can get accurate. I think that's a good policy. And I think you guys should pursue that. Okay. My other question is, I know there's a lot of state tax appeals. I don't know what the progress, what the progress is on those. How many are active right now?
Well, after the revow, about twenty commercial properties filed. And they have not been, some have been settled, but they have filed again. So that's about forty. Out of five hundred, excuse me, out of five thousand line items, there's about forty now. But forty really represents twenty properties.
Twenty, twenty.
Right.
Right. So none of those have been adjudicated? None of those have been settled?
Some have, from, from the original revow. Some I have done, some, and some are not. A lot of them are starting to come up now. Um, I haven't really given up much. I, meaning, my, what I try to do is get them to drop those years, and I'll adjust them for the following. So it doesn't, it's not a payback out of the, the budget.
Okay. But over this, over a period of years, though, you're losing ratables.
But not losing, they're the same assessment they were, until it gets, until it gets adjudicated. And that doesn't mean they're gonna go down.
Right. They could, right, the town could.
Okay. They haven't, and if they drop those two, those two years for something next year, it's much better off for, for the town.
Okay. Well, how much have we taken from these tax cases in the last year, eighteen months? How much have we lost in ratables?
So far, maybe two hundred thousand dollars. Less than a house.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey, Rich.
Hey, Rich Dune, five two five, Rainbow Street. So we've been in communication. We need to. So I guess I probably shouldn't feel too big, because ours' assessment only went up a hundred thousand. Maybe I'm in the majority compared to my hair. I'm in the thirty-five percent. They sent me a card. I contacted them within a week. I contacted them again. No response from this inspection company. How do we get them to come in and do an inspection?
I, I think, so there, there was a little thing on the card that was a little bit wrong. And those emails were not going to the right place. And when I found out about it, I changed it immediately. But there were a few houses with it. Some people then contacted me personally, and then I scheduled them. Some people did not get them.
Can you do that, can you do that for Rich?
If, it doesn't have to be five years, but you can also look at your proper directory card and see if the data is correct or not. Okay. So one of the things you had sent us was about basement. How does the basement factor into a house assessment? I'm not looking for a detail, why not?
If, if it has a basement, it gets a factor of like small, ten thousand, excuse me, fifteen thousand. If it's finished, it gets another ten thousand. That's the adjustment that I make for it.
Okay. So it has nothing to do with the size of the house, whether it's finished or not?
No, you could, you could do it. Yeah. Some basements, some basements are, you know, Mac Daddy great things, okay? But it's not living space. Counting the living space. If it's under the ground and there aren't actual egresses, that does not count as living space.
Even if it's finished?
Correct. If you have a bedroom down there, you don't have an egress, that's illegal. Like, people can't live there legally.
All right. Because we have a crawlway. I mean, that, and what we were comparing to was houses with basements.
Right.
You know, that.
And I know, I know some basements are really great. If you have a bathroom down there, you're gonna be assessed for a bathroom. That counts. If you have a kitchen down there, you're gonna get assessed for a second kitchen. But it's not, but you're not gonna get more, like, if you have bedrooms down there, they don't count. They're, if you sell the house, you can't market. They're not legal bedrooms. Okay? So I don't, so when I compare, when I compare the houses, I really try to be very, you know, the same houses in your neighborhood is usually because a lot of them are sold.
Oh, yeah.
For good prices. For good prices. But for basements, there's not, there's not a big adjustment. Okay? And also pools. You, so you could have the most beautiful in-ground pool backyard going. It's only adding about fifteen to twenty thousand. Because some people look at that and say, no way, never. Big detraction. Some people are like, this is great. So even on real, you know, someone, the real estate appraisals don't count a lot for those things.
But it doesn't add a lot of value to the sales if you're selling it. Could be a hundred thousand dollars difference. But it's like you.
Oh, but a lot of people might not look at the house because of the house itself. So your market, your buyers aren't, are more than that.
Okay. Rich, anything else?
So I guess the last question is, if I understood the last response, it looks like even though my property assessment went up, my taxes should change because everybody went up. It says the taxes.
Your, your taxes will probably change, but they're not gonna change the same percentage as your assessment changed because everybody went up. Also, as we went before, for many years, the assessments never changed, and the taxes went up every year. Because it's not, I, I don't, you don't gain revenue by increasing people's assessments.
What, what tax bill does the assessment apply to?
In twenty twenty-five.
What is the first one, twenty-five tax?
August.
All right. So that's when we're gonna know what are.
Right. Because quarters one and two.
In July, you get it July.
Quarters one and two are always estimated based off of last year's numbers. Three and four is when you justify it up with this year's tax rate.
Okay. So if we want to do appeal, we have to do an appeal.
Yeah, do it now. Yeah, do it now. Correct.
Correct, Rich, yeah. And that would be up until when, though? Is it April or May?
May first.
May first. That's the key to it.
Yes, because.
And I would also set up, Rich, I would set a time limit or two.
Rich, because when you appeal, you're not appealing your taxes. You are appealing your assessment.
Yeah.
On the part of the.
Thanks, Rich.
Unless it's a revow, I think it's sort of more than it might say May first after that. In an assessment or revow year or something like that.
Okay. Do you want to hold on a minute? Oh, I used to be mic shy. Hi, Gordon.
Hi.
You said that basically it went up twelve percent in the assessment.
Aggregates.
Yeah. What, what do we do with the aggregate?
What do we do with that?
We multiply it by something?
We take the budget and we divide by that number. And that gives you the tax rate. So when the bottom number is bigger, the tax rate is smaller.
Right.
Unless the bottom.
Two years ago, I appealed the, I, I was a nice person. I let the company.
Right.
They made a mistake. They said I have a bathroom in the air. I only have a bathroom.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a piece of paper that came from you, I believe, that said that for twenty twenty-three, your house is, uh, the assessment on my house was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars after the appeal. I just did a little calculation. You raised my assessment by eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, which is twenty-four percent of what it was. So why are you saying, well, it went up twelve, but.
Because.
Also, my name is Bob Sierra, and I live on.
The whole town, as a whole, went up an average of twelve. But to get an average, some people went up more and some people went up less.
So because I went through the trouble of.
Right. But it was two years ago. What, did the revow?
Years ago. Yeah. I moved here in nineteen eighty-four.
And how much was the house then?
Once.
Right. And how much was it in nineteen eighty-four, when you bought it?
Hmm, I don't even.
Twenty thousand, maybe?
I don't.
Would you take that for your house now?
No, it was in nineteen eighty-four. It's been thirty-seven years. It's been eighty-eight thousand.
Correct. Because there was no, no maintenance being done.
So when you.
Would you take eighty-eight thousand now? The assessment that it was for thirty-five years, take eighty-eight thousand? I'll probably write that back tomorrow.
Ridiculous.
It is.
Yeah. But also, I don't think anybody's gonna pay four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred for the house. So, but hook me up for, I happen to email you.
Do you, do you use email?
Oh, yeah.
So do you use email? It's really great. Then I can email, email him back, um, information.
You could send him the comp stone, too?
Absolutely.
So she'll, yeah, she'll send you the county comp.
And comps are like, they're different colors.
But then, but once we, but once I do that, and you can look at it, and then we have something to talk about.
I would come in and see her, Bob, Wednesdays.
Yeah, but the whole town will pay.
We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it.
And she does appointments, too, so you can, yeah.
We have to pay for it.
Yeah.
So I lose on a percent picture. Everybody else got hit by twelve. I get hit by.
But everyone else wasn't twelve. Most of the residential houses are, are higher. Right, are higher. And the, the rate from two years ago, a lot of people went up about twenty percent because that's what's really the rate's been the last two years.
I didn't, well, I went from eighty-eight to three hundred.
Right. Because the ratio was only twenty-four.
Four or five hundred percent.
Right. Because from the revow, from the year when they had the revow numbers of eighty-eight thousand to the next year, the whole residential went up about three hundred percent. About three hundred percent. Because the ratio was only twenty-four. So your, your assessment only represented twenty-four percent of the actual value.
No, I think I have to divide three seventy by eighty-eight. One, two, three, four, five. It's close to five hundred percent.
Right. But it was an average and not all total got, went up the same amount. That's why waiting for so long, some parts of town, some types of houses, some parts of the segment of the properties go up at different rates. That's why it's not good to wait thirty-five years to do a revow.
Well, I live in a seventeen hundred and fifty-foot square area.
Yeah.
I have one bed. I have an unfinished basement, unfinished attic. And I have three bedrooms, dining room, living room, and kitchen. That's all I have. And as you remember, when I was in the cops, the only cops, like, they're fine. One bed. One bed. Of the little, uh, ranch houses, like on First and Second Street, which sell for, I don't know what they sold now. Two years ago, they were selling for, I saw some for like a hundred and eight thousand.
I don't think last year.
Two hundred.
And I think over a hundred thousand.
When, when we've been doing this, it was twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, right?
The appeal would have been in twenty twenty-three. Because that's when the reval numbers went on.
You gave me the appeal for twenty twenty-three, so you gave it to me in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it was for the value of twenty twenty-three. The inspections were in twenty twenty-two, the values were in twenty twenty-three. So I, I gave it to you in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, all right. Well, I'll put in an appeal and I'll try to get you good comps, but there are too many. There's a lot of you. I have one bed.
Right, but when, if one, if one house has one bathroom and one house has two bathrooms, but they're exactly the same otherwise, you make a dollar adjustment. You say, well, you're exactly the same.
But me, as a homeowner, you've got to give me three comps. I don't know that.
But she can give, you can, she can get the comps for it.
I'm looking for three bedrooms, one bed, a house. Plus I live on Boundless Road, which is no good for children.
Yeah.
It's just like growing up, living on a highway.
It, it, okay. So that would be a little bit less than a house of the same house in the neighborhood that's not on Main Street.
State I would.
Thank you.
Jonathan Beal, Three-Town Walnut Street. I just have three questions. Um, and maybe this is part, maybe partially answered already. Are the comps that you're doing for Middlesex, do you look at Middlesex Borough, Middlesex County?
Middlesex Borough. Middlesex Borough only.
Middlesex Borough only. And if you don't come up with, like you said, if only three comps are available for that specification, do you then search for a wire area?
Only in Middlesex County, uh, Middlesex Borough. I would, what I would do is I would then, I would, let's say I would look for three bedrooms, one bathroom, and then I exhausted my search, let's just say, I would go to a three-bedroom, two-bath and make an adjustment for the bathroom store. But I would still try to stay the square foot, same style. I was trying to stay Cape Cod with Cape Cod. Cape Cod's a different market than Colonial. So Cape Cod with Cape Cod, stay to try to stay the three bedrooms, definitely try to stay the same square footage. Where I run into trouble, there are some houses that are called like a bungalow, but it, I think it's sort of a judgment call with a bungalow versus a ranch versus a Cape Cod. So sometimes I don't have enough comps. So I would narrow it down to the same square footage, same bedrooms, bathrooms, the best I can. The past few years, there's lots of sales. It's not hard time to get comps. There's a pretty wide range of them available.
Okay, because I'm in the new six hundred thousand dollar club.
Okay.
After a twenty percent bump this year.
Yeah.
Um, and a cursory glance at comps for both the borough and the wire county, and I'm talking either, whether it's Edison, Matashin, or Paris, or Cranberry, or Cranford, um.
Like, not looking there.
Okay, I understand, but even in the borough, how many six hundred thousand dollar club homesales have there been?
A lot.
A lot.
On three-bedroom houses?
A lot.
Okay. Um, so that's, my second question is, at, at the top of the meeting, we talked about how a lot of us could have an informal meeting with you prior to filing an official appeal. Um, does an imp, does an, does that conversation with, with the assessor, um, can that possibly affect the assessment rate for twenty twenty-five? Or are we talking about future years at that point?
If you file an appeal.
I said before you file an appeal, because you advise.
I can't change it.
You can't change it now.
Without, it's on the book, I need an official way to change it, which is an appeal.
Okay.
That would affect twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
It affects the year and then it happens.
Is there a situation where the conversations that I had with you or someone else had with you could affect the twenty twenty-six tax rate without having to go through the appeal process? Like, maybe you make an adjustment to the property card that was erroneous or something like that?
Yeah, if, if, let's just say, you come to me and say, like, I don't even have a house. Like, it got knocked down and you didn't realize. Then, in that sense, I could file an appeal and correct it that way. Because that is, that would be clearly, uh, not, you know, that's, like, the house wasn't there anymore. That's not a judgment call, like, it's not there anymore, right? Um, if it's, if your assessment is with, if it's within the comps that I, and then you bring me some other comps, I'll put your comps on my grid and we'll see where they come out. If, and then we'll, we'll talk about it. If there's a big error in something in your house, then there's, maybe there's something we could do about it. But in most cases, you'll have to file the appeal and I can settle with you. You don't have to, it's, it's not that you always have to go and plead your case with the commissioners. I can, I can settle, I settle a lot of them. But, um, you know, and there's times when I was like, you know, maybe, maybe you have a good appeal, like, but you have to, I, I'm, maybe I'll settle with you. But you still have to file the appeal to begin with.
Okay.
To set it in motion.
All right. Uh, my last question is, uh, do you have a distribution of the property value increases? Um, for, like, how many are below like ten percent versus how many are above the ten percent this year?
Not in my head right now.
Um, is that data that can be made available, can be published and, you know, something like that? So that, the people that feel it inequitable may get a better picture, like, might, maybe not twenty-one percent, but maybe like another, maybe half the town was twenty-one percent and I'm really not.
It, the thing is, is that it's really based on the comps. And there have been about fifteen people written to me since the cards came out and I sent, uh, the comp grid to. In every case, their comps were, their assessment was within the range of those comps. Without looking into anything further, that's how they've come out. There may be other, there's people that I have to continue, maybe there's some more research and maybe we'll unearth the things that will reduce their assessment. But the initial ones that I've done, the range is there. And that's where the numbers come from. That's, that's where the assessment comes from.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Laura.
Laura Thomas, we want to ask you, I'm going to object to can of worms, I'm not going to talk about assessment. Um, I understand that's a real important issue. I agree with everything going up, but I'm really concerned about our taxes. And as you stated, the taxes are not based on the assessment. And so, um, if I'm correct in my figures, like, some people here might be able to help, but fifty-four percent of your tax dollars go to the schools. And, um, I've been attending many, many board meetings, being, um, leaning on deaf ears. No answers from them. But I don't know how many of you have looked at their school budget and where they're spending money. I've asked at many, 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 many meetings. We as the public are on a tight budget. So you cut back, you know, have you, you cut some coffee, some Starbucks, you know, grab some dinner as often. So I've asked them to please look at where they're spending the money. And every time I go back and look at the bill list, that's not happening. So our voices need to get to them so that they make their budget lower. I'm assuming that the council, human, people are going to try their best to bring theirs lower. But we need people to go and voice your opinion because that's where the majority of the tax dollars are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you.
Mark the calendars. April twenty-fourth at six o'clock, is there a budget hearing meeting? So that would be the time that we could go and voice our opinion. April twenty-fourth, six o'clock, you have to go in door one to the library.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, any other questions for the tax assessor?
I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
About my house on Monday night. When the.
Uh, yeah, you're going to have to go and name and address. Did you speak to Jack, Michael Ichik?
I thought it was you. Um, Tony Cressbox, A. N. S. Before we had our house reassessed, their assessment came, they told us that our house was three bedrooms, two baths. Well, at recess, we don't have that, it's two bedrooms.
And I cracked the record two years ago and you told me about it.
Right. So what happened, I was saying all the taxes back then, and you tell me there was nothing I could do, but now you're saying like it seems for people, it's different, they would get something back, but.
You can't get anything back from any previous years. It, it's on the, the homeowner's responsibility to appeal your assessment if your assessment is incorrect.
But we didn't know that that's what it was until.
I understand.
Hey, where's your third bedroom? Where's your second bedroom? I'm like, what are you talking about? Look in my house, there's nothing.
Right, and if your assessment never changes ever, it's a lot harder to tell what, if it's right or not. If your assessment isn't one hundred percent, it represents twenty-four percent. It's a lot harder to tell if your house is right or if your assessment's right or not. What was your assessment before the reval? Eighty, eighty thousand? Yeah. Okay. Was your house worth eighty thousand back two years ago? No, it was worth, you know, three hundred, four hundred thousand.
No, it was definitely not that much. I live in a crappy house.
Okay, I'm estimating, I'm estimating. What I'm saying is it wasn't worth the eighty thousand that the assessment was. And you wouldn't know that because it was not, it was made in nineteen eighty-six. So now you can look at the assessment, you can be like, yeah, it's worth that, yes, not worth that. Let me look. Let me look at some houses that are selling. What are they selling for? And you can do that. Your assessment, yes, when they came in for your inspection during the reval two years ago, they corrected your record to, to two bedrooms. That's what, it was valued at then, at the time of the reval, it's what it's valued at now. I sent you comps on two-bedroom houses on your same square footage.
Yeah, well, kind of. Some of them were, maybe your, the property was a lot bigger than mine, and they said, and yours, they didn't even say that. The other houses were average and mine was fair. Yes, I was pretty much looking the shit up, I get it. But I don't think that some of that you sent me were not comparable.
Okay. I understand that. And if you do an appeal, you can come in with your comps and we can see where they, and I'll put them on the grid too and we'll see how they compare.
It's very hard to get hold of you. Like you had said, now I understand, like, the email was wrong because I sent.
On that email, but my emails have been the whole time. I looked back through my records and I didn't have an email from you until twenty twenty-two.
That said, if you need.
For inspection.
Great, so I thought that I put it with talks to me, but I also left you three or four messages and I never got it.
And again, I looked through my log of calls and I didn't, I didn't see, and I, I did apologize and I'm sorry and I don't know why that is, but I did look back through my email because you said you sent many messages, I looked.
I didn't know that that was the wrong email. I get that, but like you said, I.
But, but I did talk to you through email in twenty twenty-two because when I looked back, I looked and I'm like, yeah, there it is, there's the emails, our exchange back and forth several times. And I said, wow, I'm really sorry I missed because I don't see that. And, and I did, I did apologize. And once I knew, I have been communicating back and forth with you as quickly as I can. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm standing here, I'm not trying to hide from people, I'm communicating as much as best I can.
My name is Christopher Myers, I live in Sixwood, seven, Mountview Terrace. Uh, I have really one question. When you do these assessments, are you taking into consideration houses in the floodplain?
Yeah.
Okay, well. Uh, comps that you sent me.
Some of them were in the floodplain and two of them weren't.
And three were, two houses on my street were not in the comps.
Because they weren't during the sales period?
Last year.
Okay. And then we, and then we spoke about it.
Uh, back to my own concern is, you know, if you're in the floodplain, there's several areas in Middlesex or floodplain there.
Yep, absolutely.
It's a big hit when you live there because you got to pay.
Because you have to pay the insurance.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
You take that into account, don't you?
Yep, and busy roads too.
Who's, uh, who's. Most of the, um, like I say, the comps that I got, I, there was one floodplain, but that was the only one I noticed from the outside.
On yours, was there one from Drake on there or near there? Maybe, there was another, the third.
Washington Avenue.
There was a, whatever the third one was, was also right on the, the roof, but not that side of it, it was on the other.
That's my biggest issue. So that's, that's all.
Thank you.
On, so when I do the actual assessments, my program that I use for that does take adjustments on busy roads, floodplains, things. When I send the grid that I, like, you write to me, it's about, and I send it to the grid, those adjustments aren't on there, but I look at, I don't make the actual dollar adjustments, but I look at it and say, so these two houses are the same, this one, yours is in the floodplain and that one's not. It sold for higher, you should be probably a little less. I look at that and it's like, yeah, it is a little less. I don't, I'm not making a lot of adjustments on what I send you, I'm not making a whole lot of them. It's easier to understand if there aren't a lot of big adjustments. But yeah, if everyone, if, if your house on a busy road and all, every comp isn't, you should be, you know, less than, than those.
Uh, Laura September, five thirty-four, Howard S. I have a question about transparency information that was available for homeowners and residents. Is, does the city have any plans or are there items available now where we can see our property cards without having to contact you or we can see the now that you're using without?
No.
Are there any plans?
Oh, you can look at any cell you want through, there's a, a database, look up Eulonzo Lee, see what our sales are. I do not give out information other than the property record card on a property when someone opens it. Your property record card just has, it does have the picture of the front of the house if it's in the record, which it usually is. Um, and it gives, you know, the three, you know, the three bedrooms, two bathrooms, all square footage, year built, um, that kind of data. I don't even think it has your name on it. Um, that's it, that's what someone gets if they wire. They can't get the other picture, other pictures that I might have, they can't get any, any other thing.
How come?
Like, because you want me sending your other pictures or other data to anybody?
No, like as a, like as a property owner, say I have an account.
You can come in and look at what I have and I'll show you, but the property record card that I'm going to send out is going to be the data that everyone else is going to get. You can come and I'll show you on the computer if I have other pictures or whatever it is. But really, the data that's the property record card, that's the data that's being used and that's anything that anybody else is going to get.
Yeah, I understand you will give it to me if I contact you.
Yeah.
As a person who's at work.
How do I know that you are a homeowner when you email me? And you say, send me the data? How do I know that's you?
I don't, that's what I'm saying.
So I'm not sending out information to, actually, most people do Oprah now because of that.
What I'm saying is, is could the town develop or have something where the residents register as who they are and we all have login like every other site?
No.
And then we can access the information that you would provide us without us having to contact you?
Probably not, Ed, and so, probably not. It's because a lot of the data in the, you cannot get access to a database. There, there's a lot of data in there that you just can't give out to everybody.
And doing that, Oprah would be the only option?
Yeah, but it's still only going to give.
Just the card.
Yeah, as a courtesy, I would show you on the screen anything else that I would have.
But I'll never, I'll never get to you. I, like, I don't work in the town and I.
I don't, well, I work here, but only on one.
Eighty a.m. to six, seven o'clock at night.
But, but there's not going to be a lot of other stuff other than what is on the property record card. I mean, I don't.
But you can email her too, Dawn.
Yeah, I can email the property record card, but the thing is, is the only, really the thing, what's protecting, getting protected is if there's any other pictures other than, say, that the front, which is going to be, like, you know, people are going to see the front of the house. And, and, and that is likely. And, and that is like that because most people want it that way.
And if you want Wednesdays, like at seven?
It's not my rule.
Six-thirty or seven, you can, you can make an appointment. She'll, you know, Wednesday night, I mean, she'll, she'll be here if you get out at seven.
It's not my rule. People try to buy this data and they, they can't buy it either. It's not, it's like, not overbowl.
Like I said, I'm not saying make it available to everybody and take what you're going to give us anyway available to the homeowner of that specific property.
But, well, I can send you through the email. It's fine.
Thank you.
I have a question not for this. I think it's much more important than this. Is, are we on to that more yet?
Uh, almost, yeah. Almost. Tim?
You referenced Oprah. Is that Oprah, the web browser or Oprah?
No, no.
Oprah, Oprah's Records.
Acronym.
Yeah, a lot of what happens, like if someone nowadays, when someone is going to sell a house or list a house, almost always the realtor will Oprah what's on the property record card? Because, you know, they want to check it. They want to use it or whatever. I mean, you can, you can write to me anytime you want. Get it. That's what you want.
Is there anything else for Dawn? Anything assessment related, reevaluation related? Any questions at all? Yeah.
Not, not, unrelated?
Related, unrelated, yeah. So we're going to open it. So the reason why I'm doing that is because I'm going to take a five-minute recess. Dawn's going to leave. That's why I want to make sure all the questions are answered. And then five-minute quick recess and then we're going to come back, clear the room and then get back into the rest of the agenda. We'll have a public portion for everything else unrelated to her.
I got one question.
Go ahead. Oh, you got a name, a name and address.
Charlie Almond, running that. So the property assessment number takes care of the budget. It's based on the, based... The property assessment is for the budget of the town.
No. The money that the town needs to run the town is the budget. That budget, along with all the other budgets, school, library, county, state, whatever, gets divided by what the values of the town is. So all the assessments of the town, all the houses, what are they worth? You divide the budget by the assessment. That creates the tax rate. Then the tax rate gets applied to your assessment and that's what your taxes are. So that's your piece of the pie.
Your assessment doesn't affect it.
Your assessment is your piece of the pie. It doesn't have anything to do with the budget.
So I see. Unless they spend all these...
Yeah.
More they spend, right?
Right.
And then eventually the taxes will be done.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, anybody else for Dawn? Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, five-minute recess and then we'll finish the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Dawn.
Dawn.
Good job.
I was going to go back, huh?
Yeah, you did.
Got to go home and click on it now.
I know. Uh, we have three tonight. Ordinance number 2142-25, an ordinance vacating a portion of Grove Avenue in the borough of Middlesex. That hearing will be on March 25th. That's the second meeting in March, not the first meeting. I want to point that out. Okay. I need a motion for introduction? And a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call for this? Chris, I think?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Roll call.
Council President Conahan?
Yes.
Councilman Carn?
Yes.
Councilman DeSempa?
Yes.
Councilman Dino?
Yes.
Councilman Doty?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay. So the public hearing will be on 3/25, March 25th. Number two, ordinance 2143-25, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Middlesex, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, Chapter 62, the Municipal Alliance Committee on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. That will be on March the 11th. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Kelsey, please take the role.
Council President Conahan?
Yes.
Councilman Carn?
Yes.
Councilman DeSempa?
Yes.
Councilman Dino?
Yes.
Councilman Doty?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, number three, we have, we have four total. Ordinance 20, 2144-25, an ordinance amending Chapters 420-7 and 420-59 of the Municipal Code Regarding Contractors' Storage Yards. Uh, that will also be on March the 11th. And is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, a second? Okay. Kelsey, please take the role.
Council President Conahan?
Yes.
Councilman Carn?
Yes.
Councilman DeSempa?
Yes.
Councilman Dino?
Yes.
Councilman Doty?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the last one, ordinance 2145-25, an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Cultural and Arts Committee, the Municipal Code of the Borough of Middlesex to include the responsibilities of the Beautification Committee. That'll also be on March 11th. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Council President Conahan?
Yes.
Councilman Carn?
Yes.
Councilman DeSempa?
Yes.
Councilman Dino?
Yes.
Councilman Doty?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance for public hearing and a final adoption tonight is ordinance number 2141-25, an ordinance amending Article 4, Structures Damaged or Destroyed by Fire or chapter, of Chapter 317, Property Maintenance of the Municipal Code of the Borough of Middlesex to adopt the provisions of NJAC 5:23-2.32, Unsafe Structures. Uh, can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. So the public, public floor is open. Anybody that has any comments on this ordinance, please come up to the, to the microphone just for this ordinance. Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, I'll close the public portion for this ordinance. And I need a motion to adopt?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. And...
Did you do motion to close?
Uh, did I?
Better close.
Okay. Sorry. Motion to close the public portion?
Close.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Now I need a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Okay. A second? Ken? Okay. Kelsey, please take the role.
Council President Conahan?
Yes.
Councilman Carn?
Yes.
Councilman DeSempa?
Yes.
Councilman Dino?
Yes.
Councilman Doty?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance passes. Moving on to adoption of minutes, approval of the February 11th, 2025 Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Mayor's not here. Moving on to council reports. Okay. A couple of things. I'm going to really fly through this. Some, some, a report from the Finance Department, from our CFO. They worked with the auditors for the 2024 Annual Financial Statement. That report was submitted to the state of New Jersey last week. She is meeting with the Financial Advisor and Bond Counsel to discuss the plan and timetable late April, early May to convert some of our short-term bands into long-term general bonds. Since 2025 is the final payment on the Police Department, the Police Department Construction. This will allow us to streamline other outstanding debt without increasing debt payments in 2026 and beyond. Our CFO attended a shared services webinar highlighting a program through the Department of Community Affairs called Local Assistance Bureau. It offers free consultations and studies to towns to assess opportunities for shared services or other overhauls to operations. Great opportunity to have them evaluate Fire Department for Fire District option or get feedback on EMS possibilities. I talked about this last week. NJDEP, we filed for a $75,000 grant for Victor Crowe Park. The Environmental Commission worked on and submitted a grant for $20,000 for the environmental resource inventory. We should find out in May. And then the mayor and I are meeting this Friday with the business administrator and the CFO for the very first time to get a preliminary look, the first draft of this year's proposed municipal budget. Uh, that's the first draft. Step two will be meeting with the Finance Councilmatic Committee to share these, the findings from Friday. Uh, the Parks Committee will host four public meetings to gather public input for creating the Victor Crowe Park Master Plan. The first meeting is going to be Tuesday, April 1st, in the Library Community Room. Uh, that's going to be with the engineering for suburban that we chose. I'm not sure the time yet. That's still going to be determined. The second public, it's between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. The second public meeting will be Tuesday, May the 6th. Both are the first Tuesdays of the month. And that's going to be onsite at Victor Crowe Park Annex Building. That's the building we purchased at the front of the park. The exact time for that is still to be determined, but probably between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. Recreation is hosting its annual bunny hop. It's a long tradition in, in Middlesex. Uh, that'll be Saturday, March 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Different than other years, it's going to be at the Rec Center and not at Mountain View Park. Um, activities include Easter Bunny photo ops, petting, actually a petting zoo, games, crafts, and an egg hunt. I want to thank Carmen Modica for her years of service. I want to also thank Alex, I know he's here somewhere, Augustine for his years of service at DPW. And I've added tonight an emergency services volunteer fee waiver as a workshop topic. Depending on time, we may push that to the next meeting. I think a fee waiver, and I want to introduce it and get consensus from the council, would help all of our, all volunteer active members, specifically fire, Fire Department, Fire Police, OEM, and Rescue Squad with some of the borough-only fees, like permits. Not state, not county, just borough-only fees. This could help with recruiting new members, which we drastically need for emergency services. And then remember that Saturday, May 3rd, is our Second Annual Volunteer Fair. It's at the Library Community Room. So we have some time for that. Moving on, Councilman Carn?
Uh, thank you, sir. I just went to my first Board of Education meeting. I attended more of a parent than a person, than a liaison. But as liaison, I see that they are in their contracts with the NEA, which is always a, a interesting conversation to have when dealing with those. So good luck to them. Good luck to our teachers. Good luck to everybody. And you think of us when you are doing that. And for our disabled and senior services, I have not gotten any updates. So everything is going well. We're taking care of those, that, um, genre of our community. For the Film Committee, again, we are still working on getting everything aesthetically ready for, um, companies that are interested in filming within our community and attempting to get some ratable space up of that. And as you can see, as everybody else, for a basic of an ordinance, as you see one of our ordinances that we are talking about has to do with the Culture and Arts Committee and accepting them. And that is another beautiful aspect of like how you get involved and have your voice heard. Like if you want to see something, us do something. This would be a perfect time to come and talk, to add to it. And the final, that is it. Yes, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Thanks, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Joe, Joe DeSenda?
Yeah, I attended the League of Municipalities Budgeting for the Council for instance, last Saturday. That was a good event. I learned a lot about the budgeting process. And we had another pool meeting. And just to announce that the full registration, full membership for the coming year will start next week. We have not raised, or they have not raised the rates, same rates as last year. So we're hoping to have everybody come back and fill the roles. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Councilman Dino?
Okay. For J. Love, meeting tomorrow night, number 26, 7:00 p.m., at the Live Community Room. Also, there's one order of business there for the next meeting. So that would be March 12th. Plus, for environmental, Mike mentioned the $20,000 grant. Okay. They also, the Green Team submitted first round of the Sustainable Jersey Certification. And like Mike said, the $20,000 PSC and G grant. And there's also a $2,000 grant. $20,000 will be used for a more comprehensive ERA and $2,000 for a Green Team startup. Also, Sustainable Jersey PSC and G Partnership Program. We'll do an energy audit portfolio and we'll focus on Borough Hall, the Library, Police Rescue Squad, Rec Center, DPW Garage, Beechwood Firehouse, and Victor Crowe Park Annex. So that's the good thing. And for DPW, I was talking to Chris May today. The one bus stop on Rarick, if you notice, when you ride your bikes or walk there, you can't get through kind of.
Yep.
There, Chris has been in talks, talks with them and they're thinking about putting it on the other side of Rarick. So it'll be, coming from Bound Brook, it'll be before the stop. the stop. So, that, that's it. Also, people are trying to contact DPW, their phones are down. You got some emails that their phones aren't working there. Kelly's been involved. Hopefully by this week, they should be up, so anyone wants to get ahold of DPW can email there and let him pick up there. And, you know, DPW are just preparing now for spring events and doing pothole repairs for the rest of the month.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Doty?
Yeah, the police report tonight, it's short and sweet. Calls for service last month in January was 2085 for adult arrests, 372 summonses, 35 radar, and 34 motor vehicle crashes. Let me see, I got anything for you. The detective bureau is investigating 10 thefts. They did firearms permitting, 39 of those, and fingerprinting, 37. It was a nice, quick month. I will have the other two reports the next meeting, because they didn't get to me. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. That's it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Councilman Greig?
Yeah, regarding the shade tree, they had the first meeting recently for the year. You know, they, they just basically went through and found which trees they wanted to go out and look at, and, and it was just starting to get them swinging, so not much to report there. Their meeting's the third, I'm sorry, the second Thursday of the month, at 7:00 PM here in this room. Then, the Board of Health, they meet the third Thursday of the month in the, in the library meeting room. And it was the first month that we were pretty much handled by Somerset County. Reports are like a thousand times better than we were getting before from Middlesex County, so that was good. They had a lot of information, and just, you know, much, much better than before. Regarding zoning, Tyler gave me some updates. Recently, they had 14 summonings, 11 notices of violation, seven zoning permits were applied for, and rental registration so far in 2025 for 12 properties totaling 17 units. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Councilman. Administrator, what place?
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, everyone. The Army Corps of Engineers has reported to us that the opening of South Lincoln Avenue will take place in late March, so fingers crossed on that, although we've been waiting a long time, but it looks promising that it will be in March. Work is continuing on the 2025 municipal budget. The Chief Financial Officer and I have reviewed the entire preliminary budget. We've already highlighted areas where we think we're going to be recommending cuts. Next, we're going to sit down with each department head to go over the submitted section of the municipal budget that the section of the table submitted for their departments, and then we'll of course be interfacing with the leadership as the acting mayor mentioned earlier. Progress is being made on contract negotiations as we continue to meet with representatives of the Police Penelope Association, the Department of Public Workers, Department of Public Workers Union, and the White Collar Workers Union, so we hope that keep progress on that being made. Last Tuesday, as also mentioned by the acting mayor, we had a good meeting to set up the schedule of preliminary work sessions for the public on the master plan for Victor Crowe Park, and we'll be doing a lot of outreach to the community, a lot of publicity, so be looking for that. We really want maximum participation in this process. Reminder that the Joint Land use Board will be discussing the restoration of our 75 single-family residential zones designation for the property at 1190 Mount Avenue, which is the former Presbyterian Church, Lot 1 and Block 219. That will be at the Board's March 12th meeting. Resolutions this evening include the appointment of Kelsey Meissen, Deputy Registered Deputy Board of Health Secretary, effective March 1 of this year, a resolution to accept the resignation of Carmen Modica of the Clerk's Office, effective February 28, 2025, acceptance of the resignation of Alex Augustine from the Department of Public Works, effective February 21, 2025, for the approval of change order number one to decrease the total amount of the 2023 New Jersey Department of Transportation Stating Grant Project for Rutgers Lane and Princeton Drive. That's the decrease in the amount of $63,262.63. Tonight's agenda workshop will include a discussion of an emergency services volunteer fee waiver, as well as the recommended ordinance by the Environmental Commission regarding the invasion of plants. And in executive session, personnel matters regarding the zoning and code enforcement officer, as well as the electrical subcode official will be discussed. We'll also be discussing contract negotiations with the rest of the squad.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, privilege of the four?
That's me.
If you, yeah. Oh, hold on, hold on. Motion, open the four?
Motion.
Second? Okay. All in favor? All right.
Name, name, actor. Christopher Myers, 607 Mountview Terrace. What's happening is a new person bought a home, moved in, this was last year's time, and they proceeded to put at least 500 tons of steel in their backyard in a floodplain, most definitely a wetland area, the whole area behind here is all that land. Okay, so they can't do anything there. I told the town, I came over to the zoning official, Tyler, and spoke to him, and said, "Look, I don't want to make a big deal about this, but just have to take care of this, you know? I lived there 35 years, coached baseball 20 years here, I love this town, but this has, is a real problem."
Yep.
It's already not documented, they had no representation of testing anywhere in the town, no permits were made, they just dumped it. Now, they raised their level of their backyard, four feet. They had tandem dump trucks, 23 tons a piece, three times an hour for two days, going up and down the street. And now, suddenly, a couple ones later, we have a gas leak in the street. Now, one may not have ended with the other, but this third, and I, as I take, I hope it is not, but if it's toxic, we could destroy the whole water table in Middlesex County and Somerset County, because it's great, it's right on the other side, and it was not tested. Or if it was, why didn't? First of all, it shouldn't be there. You can't do that. You have a federal flood protection act, you have the flood hazard and control act, you can't do anything to raise or lower the level of a floodplain. And if it is wetland, and I'm pretty sure it is, it's a total disaster. Now, I told them about this immediately, and it's been, I told the mayor, he said, "These things take time." Well, six months, way too much time, because the, the, the cell needs to be tested immediately and removed, and then tested again. Because if the water cable is bad, we got bigger problems of budget than this, believe me.
Can you stay, can I, I just want to get your phone and email?
I mean, I have, I have a neighbor who took video of the trucks coming down.
Yep.
It destroyed the driveway, destroyed it, so I can imagine what the road is like. It's not made to carry 66,000 pounds, you know, 48 times a day.
Right, right.
And that's the least.
Can you stay until we take a recess after this? It'll be quick, and then can I get your information, phone, email, everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Because this is, me, this is-
Totally agree. Yeah, that's-
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
And sidebar, the same house, in complete reconstruction inside, new everything, not permit one, and, you know, where this house is next to me, if the thing burns down from poor electricity, poor-
Yeah.
That's a real problem. And we're talking about funding? It's got to be 20,000 in permanent fees there, easily. And I let them, Tyler Werbit, he contacted the construction department, and six months, I said, "What, let's say this week, what happened?" "Oh, I'll have to check." Why isn't it done? I know that is part-time, but-
That's Rob Quine, yeah.
Go out there and check it out. He was there. He said, "Well, the gentleman said it was the way, you know, people before did it." No, I don't know. I've been there 35 years, and I told him, you know, so, okay.
Thank you, thank you. So, hang tight, too.
I'll write back.
But, yeah, you could stay here, you can come back.
I'll write back.
Okay, okay. Anybody else for a public comment? Just your name and, and address.
William Geltzer, 508 Grand Street Street. Good evening, council members. Several of us are here tonight because on February 7th, Jennifer Panic went missing. She was unfortunately found the next day deceased in a park less than two blocks from her, from her house by her family. So, actions speak louder than words. While the police department was sending out requests for information to help search for Jen, they were instead restricting the search staff. Resources better trained in these situations were not brought in, volunteers were turned away, or sent in the wrong direction. In fact, more time and effort appears to have been spent searching for the alligator than for our friend who is suffering a mental health crisis. A picture is worth a thousand words. Coffee with a cop was the next morning, and it would appear to be more important than allocating resources to help search for Jen. While the scheduled far in advance events happened, life happened, and adjustments could have been made postponed or scaled back with police presence. The world doesn't stop for just one person, but why can it? Middlesex is a relatively small town, and my wife and I moved here from a county six times a year. If people who care about Jen were willing to drop everything to search, why were they turned away? Why were they prevented from going to places she was known to visit and ultimately finally discovered in? And where were the people who took an oath to protect and serve? We support the women and men of the PVA, 181. They are out working to protect the residents of this borough, day in, day out, and have responded to many different calls, but they can only act within the confines of policies and procedures from leadership. For all good deeds they do, unfortunately, it is the mistakes that have a lasting effect. The police do respond daily to accidents, protect the schools, have been proactive in making intersections safer, and respond to medical emergencies. Notice these things can be denied, but when a woman needed their help, they failed. What if this was, and fill in the blanks for any of these terms, your mother, your daughter, your wife, your sister, your friend, your coworker, your teacher? Were the actions taken over the 24 hours which you would have wanted done? How would you feel if you saw officers and elected officials smiling away in a warm building, drinking coffee, while your significant other was out missing on a cold winter night? Stop and put yourself in someone else's shoes. So, what action can be done by you? And there's three that we're asking for, and they're simple, and one's going to be a gut punch, but I've been in your shoes. Tonight, we're asking for you to make a motion right now, right here, inviting the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office in to review the actions and policies and procedures of the police department. We're asking for the installation of cameras in the parks to be added for security, and the establishment of a voluntary registration of residential cameras with the police department to allow for quicker response times than police can notify instead of having to rely on headshotting. The first item, as I said, I'm sure it's a shock to you, but I've been in your exact seat and know the initial shock and gut punch when the same request was made of me over five years ago, six years ago. Looking back, it was one of the best decisions that I made for my candidacy, and it helped, reinforced, there were many good officers within the department, but overshadowed by a few. Changes were made, leaders came forward, and the community greatly benefited. Inviting the prosecutor's office is your only action you as elected officials can take. It is a win-win for the people you took an oath to serve. If the department is working smoothly and properly, then you can proudly say you have the best department around, and what happened was an unfortunate circumstance. But if the opposite is bound, you are being proactive as leaders in your community to try and prevent this tragedy from happening again. Unfortunately, we can't bring her back, our friend, but how you act now can help give knowledge to help treat mental health, and she can also make sure that this does not happen again. Thoughts and prayers are words, not actions. Actions speak louder than words. Be leaders and act tonight. We ask that you make this motion and bring in the prosecutor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment?
Bruce Sanders, 10th of this afternoon. I know you guys are working on the borough tax, I mean, the borough funding, and then the 58% of that at the school. I went to the school board meeting. Now, they have a meeting, supposedly a meeting on the mind, but there is no communication. You can ask a question, you can make a statement, you have your three minutes. Now, mind you, they weren't good about letting people talk, and actually, I got up there. But the point is that there's no communication back and forth, there's no, they do answer some questions, but they don't answer everything. So, I know on the board's side, there's not much you can do on that other than get people elected, to get things moving, I understand, and, but what I, what I wanted to say to you is, I asked them about shared services, I was told they can't do shared services, other than maybe grounds, groundskeepers, to keep the price down. I, I asked them what's their benchmarking, and I got stares. So, the point is, Middlesex Borough ranks 196 out of 426 high schools, which I think is actually pretty good. We should be tallying that. There should be some measure of performance on their website. Nothing. You have to go to the state to find the numbers, and I'm working on looking through those numbers of their budget and things like that. The other thing, I asked them directly, and again, I got blank stares. I said to Sharon, who is part of the board, who was here, we had a community meeting. We had a list of questions for the board and for the superintendent's schools. I said, "When are we going to get answers to those questions?" She did forward, she said it, she's not supposed to speak. She did say that she told the superintendent of schools there were questions, and they have them, but they have not answered. So, they selectively choose what they want to do, and we need to find a way to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And, I mean, if you got a meeting on the mind that Wednesday, and Tuesday before the meeting, make it a meeting on the mind, just make it a conversation. And I know, absolutely, I'm going to present to them next time, you got to have a conversation. And then you could write your questions on whatever, Facebook, whatever you want, but I know you guys are aware of this, I just don't know what we can do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I know it's come up a lot, Bruce, over the last year. I know, I know, Jerry, you've been going to the meetings. He brought it up to me, just about this, what's it called? The meeting before the meeting?
Meeting of the minds.
Is that what it's called? Meeting of the whole?
Meeting of the whole, yeah.
Meeting of the whole, which I had never heard of, I'm not sure. It just didn't even sound legal, but supposedly it is. And-
I have not made it to that even yet.
Okay.
I've only, I have not made it to a meeting of the whole.
Okay. And then as far as the Board of Ed, you know, we're, I mean, Chris can chime in here, but there's, you know, it comes up a lot, Bruce, as you know, but I, I think if there's a budget issue or something that we can get involved, that's the only real reason, other than the day-to-day, everything flows through the superintendent and-
You don't have that authority.
Oh, yeah, so we don't even have that?
Wait, you don't have the authority on 58%?
No, no.
If they, if they don't pass the budget, it doesn't come to the borough?
Year, I believe that statute changed. Years and years ago, that was true, going back perhaps 15 years, but I believe that statute changed during the Christie administration. And Joe seems to, it hasn't come up in years, and I seem to recall, yeah, I seem to recall perhaps 2011, so not yet, not just yesterday, 2012.
So, our only recourse is to get people in there, to get them to make moves that they need to. I'm not saying they're doing everything wrong.
Right.
I don't know that yet, but what I am saying, a lack of communication. I can come here and I can talk to you guys, and you guys feed me back. That's great, and we just saw that in action, but they are afraid that they're going to say something with Sue. That's where I think it's coming from, that they're, and/or it gets rallied, and again, can get very emotional there, is what I felt. But the point is, we need to get them to start talking to us, because we pay the challenge.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I just wanted to see, I know you guys are aware, but-
Yeah, yeah, aware, Bruce, but I, yeah, aside from that, I think it's, I think just, you know, the right people have to be on the Board of Ed and make some change, it's just, it's not an easy process.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else from the public?
What do we do for this panic, and the scenario? How do we go apart, like come in to make sure? Because I mean, I know our police force is solid, and hopefully this is just an unfortunate thing, but I mean, do I make a motion? Do we do that now, Chris?
You take it under advisement, talk to the chief.
Take the advisement, take it to the chief.
Yeah.
Okay. So, what do we do? What do you think, Chris?
You take it under advisement and you talk to the chief.
After that, then what? Then we go to the public and talk to the chief?
Yeah, maybe, and then, Michael, you can help with that, too?
Absolutely, sir. I'll update you on what happened.
Please, yeah.
Thank you for-
I think, and I think even, even coordinating a meeting would be helpful. Sounds like maybe there's not been communications on both sides.
So, you were told not to, not to search?
There were, there were people told to go away. We have confirmation from other sources outside the town, there were listening to radio communication. They, there were feelings not to go out and search, they were turned away. In fact, they were told not to go into the park where she was eventually found, which is why we are asking for cameras to be installed, because that, you know, maybe she wasn't there at that exact moment and ended up back there, but that could then close the timeline or help monitor. They were told they were being summoned for trespassing after hours in the exact park. So, again, I know your counsel, and again, your, your attorney is telling you to talk to the chief. That is my advice to you. When, when I was in your seat, I was not, I was listening outside of that, because we had a feeling, why would I go to the department that I have a concern about to ask them if I should break somebody else's record? And that's why, again, your recourse as counsel is only, is only to go to the prosecutor's office and ask persons involved. And I've been in your seat.
I know.
But, yeah, to answer your, sorry, to answer your original question, yes, they were asked to go away, they were pushed away, they were turned away. People still tried going out, and unfortunately, they didn't, you know, an extra officer or anything helped them hurt her.
So, I know that they had doors, but they don't have door locks.
Bobby's already been seen in investigation.
All right, okay.
Oh, please, my goodness. Okay.
They're not going into investigation.
Sorry.
I just-
And I appreciate the extra time, because I know this is out of order on that, but we do appreciate this, and again, this is a strong thing to turn down, and we do hope things will went off, but hope that it never happens again, and we, we do have to change the rules.
Okay, moving on to the closing, the motion, motion closed?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all right. The privilege of the four is closed. Moving on to new, oh, all in favor?
All right.
New business consent agenda resolutions, there are 10 of them. Kelsey, you gonna run?
Yep. Resolution, yeah, resolution 71, 2025, acceptance of standing reports. Resolution 72, 2025, accepting the resignation of Carmen Modica, effective February 28, 2025. Resolution 73, 2025, appointing Kelsey Meissen Deputy Registered Deputy Board of Health Secretary, effective March 1, 2025. Resolution 74, 2025, approving change order number one, decreasing the total amount of contracts for the 2023 DOT State Aid Douglas Lane, Rutgers Lane, and Princeton Drive by Resolution 75, 2025, resolution to support publishing legal notices on official government websites. Resolution 76, 2025, authorizing the tax collector to issue a tax title lien reduction for Block 86.02, Lot 8. Resolution 77, 2025, approving the temporary discharge approval application at the factory lane site to be submitted by the MCUA at the request of Newfields on behalf of their Crop Science, Inc. Resolution 78, 2025, authorizing the tax collector to cancel property taxes for Block 357, Lot 1 and 2. Resolution 79, 2025, rescinding resolution 60, 2025, hiring the part-time electrical subcode official. Resolution 80, 2025, accepting the resignation of Alex Augustine from the Department of Public Works, effective February 21, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey. Anybody have any resolutions they want to poll, make questions about changes?
Eighty.
Number eighty?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? That's good, okay. Can I make, well, somebody has to make a motion for resolutions one through nine, not ten.
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second. We'll call.
Council President Conahan?
Yes.
Councilman Carnes?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeSino?
Yes.
Councilman Doty?
Yes.
Councilman Greig?
Yes.
Okay, so, number 10, bump?
Yeah, I see Alex is here as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alex, for your time. I know you're a young guy, like my son's age, and I think you see your future brighter somewhere else, and I wish you all luck. So, thanks for your time.
I appreciate it.
Alex, you know that, you're going to be missed.
Thank you.
Okay. Keep an, keep an eye on Artie. Okay, keep an, keep an eye on Artie.
Got it.
Okay, uh, motion for number ten.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, um, Kelsey? Have to do another roll call.
Council President Conahan?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Carn?
Yes.
Councilman D'Essenta?
Yes.
Councilman D'Assino?
Yes.
Councilman Doughty?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to non-consent, resolution eighty-one, whoa, is it you? Eighty-one, twenty twenty-five payout claim?
I can say that.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Kelsey, can you take your line?
Council President Conahan?
Yes.
Councilman Carn?
Yes.
Councilman D'Essenta?
Yes.
Councilman D'Assino?
Yes.
Councilman Doughty?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the agenda workshop item, we have two, I'm gonna, uh, the emergency services volunteer fee waiver, it's a lot, I'm gonna push that off till the next meeting, uh, just for the sake of time, uh, that's something that I added, I brought it up before, it's just gonna take a lot of time to go through. It's a waiver for fees for our, uh, fire department, our active fire department and, um, fire police, rescue, and OEM, so I think it deserves more time, so, uh, Kelsey's gonna add that to the next, next meeting.
Chris, do we need a motion to table that for the next meeting?
You can, yeah, you can, I mean, you, you, technically, you could, to amend your agenda, you could do a motion, we don't always follow that rule exactly, Kelsey, but you, you can do it that way, yeah.
Okay, sure, yeah, do, uh, a motion just to, to table it for the...
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so, number one is tabled, number two, Environmental Commission recommends an ordinance regarding invasive plants.
I mean, I, I sent it to you guys.
Bobby, yeah.
It's also on page seventy, this packet, but, some of the, I mean, we do have a bamboo ordinance already, Linda told me we do have one already. I mean, it does make sense, but some of the things I don't like about it is, um, under five...
So it includes bamboo plus other, other stuff, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I agree with some of the invasive species, but my concern is who's gonna, who's gonna moderate this, and, um, who's gonna enforce it, because, uh, some of the things here, it says, "A violation shall be given to the owner of the property from which the invasive species has spread. In writing by certified mail, return receipt request, remove the items within thirty days, cost of all remedies to prove removal of planting will be property owned." And then it also goes down to saying, "Put a lien on the property," for some of these things, I mean, like, is that, Chris?
The vast majority of our, of our penalties do include that, you know?
They do.
If they're ignored, yeah, at the last stage, at the last stage.
How is it enforced? Who enforces it?
Uh, I mean, it'd be Tyler. So they would have to come here, I mean, I, I won't wait just seeing this when the packet was distributed, and, and Council President Conahan and I had a separate discussion about this, we did try this in a different client, a line, never really got off the ground, but I did review that, that ordinance, this is more robust, the proposed ordinance that didn't get adopted is the one that I reviewed, and this one.
Do you think this, I mean, I, I believe we handled a lot of this in, uh, JLO for new, new construction.
Yeah, I mean, you can't go, they don't, it's hard to enforce on that, and too, um, you would, you know, it's not terribly unusual for, for penalties to, if they're not paid to be leaned against property, um, violations penalty in section six.
But I did see somewhere where...
Yeah, so it, it would be the general one. Bobby, you wrote, no, no.
She got it from another town.
I don't know, I guess she got it.
Yeah, because it, it's not bad, I mean, you know, in terms of ordinance, um, it's a little bit more robust than the one that I was reviewing, uh, on the separate track. Um, it just, the penalty is under your general penalty provision, which is very close to one five, it's not, um, and you just proceed with that, so. Towns are doing this, uh, we, the, the other client is Bridgewater, they elected not to do it, they also thought enforcing it would be a problem, um, and they were just focused on bamboo, you can see your laundry list here of plants.
But it also says in here, I mean, like, basically, your grandfather in, in, under number, under four, if it's been there already, it's, you know...
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen grandfather clauses, like, I, I've seen clauses that allow for, you know, potted plants, potted bamboo, plotted, potted ivies, um, up to you guys, you want to get in the game.
They're really, they're really strong on it, I mean, they really want this, so, I mean, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, towns are doing it, uh, towns are do, it's a problem, definitely towns are doing it, so, I only just saw this, you know, and it's perfectly fine, uh, when the agenda is distributed, happy to work with Claire, you know, who does, but you guys gotta wanna do it, I'm not gonna spend your money unless you want to do it.
Well, I'm in favor of that, 'cause I know they're, they're, they're pretty strong on it.
I think there's issues that we have to, I mean, the bamboo, we have multiple spots for dealing with now, so...
Yeah, I mean, you guys are fine, people, I mean, it is, enforcing is always the problem, right, with, with these, you and I had long discussions today, Council President, about enforcing other, uh, new seats type ordinance, correct, you know, so, you gotta talk to Tyler, I would, you know, or whoever you're gonna have as the tip of the spear here, typically be someone like Tyler or Rob. But, you know, like I said, it's not unheard of, the Environmental Commission is right to flag the issue, um...
You guys want Chris to, uh, work on it, come up with maybe something a little more streamlined and reintroduce it? We could workshop it again with a final version, maybe pull it down a little...
It's pretty streamlined, though, don't you think, Chris?
I, I, it's pretty, pretty, pretty good, they're pretty good, I would say, one thing you could do is, it's, there's a lot of different plants here, and you don't really have a plant expert on, um, on staff, uh, yeah, you might wanna just try it with bamboo first, and then before you get to the Japanese barberry, I'm just saying, you could, you know, maybe get...
Well, yeah, some of the stuff is pretty, pretty common in New Jersey, it's not that it's so rare, the barberries, but maybe we should check with the Rutgers, you know, uh, Experimental Station, get some, uh, expertise in on this, or, you know, work a little bit more with the Environmental Commission.
So it would only be the new planting, for obviously, any of these?
How much is this gonna run us to figure out if we can't grow plants, and are, is there any way to make back that type of money? Like, I love, I love land, I love flowers, but, but how, I mean, how many hours are we gonna spend, is it gonna be effective?
Well, with the council, I was also thinking...
Oh, you mean, enforces?
Yeah.
Does the council want to hear from the Environmental Commission on...
Yes, yeah, that's true, actually, why don't, why don't they come in and, and, 'cause, yeah, I have questions, too, and they can, they can be here.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
There's more things that we can, like, don't, don't want to...
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
And piecemeal. Okay, Bobby, why don't we do that?
Yeah, Bobby, we shall find out where this is from. I, the one that I modeled, the one that we didn't adopt in my other town, was from Burlington Township in Burlington County, it was not as robust as this. I'd be curious, I can email Claire, too.
Why don't we do that?
Just to find out where this is from, but I think it's good, and that, you could also reach out to them and see how they've had, uh, the time that they've had enforcing it. So that's homework, homework that can be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, the enforcement power is big, yeah. Yeah, that's, with all these, always enforcement.
Okay.
Any, guys, anything else on this, uh, workshop topic, no? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up, um, a motion to open it up to the public for only the invasive plant discussion.
Motion.
Okay, motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.